Act of our show, this is like Groundhog Day. We're doing it again. Commissioner McKinley, you are recognized.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I skipped lunch to go do a little homework and meet with the county attorney. And I appreciate your generosity in allowing us to recess and to give us some time to be able to do that. There were two different ways we could have handled that last item. According to our procedures, when you have a substitute motion that fails, you revert back to consideration of the original motion. We did not do that. The other option would have simply been a motion by somebody on the prevailing side, simply to reconsider. And the vote should have just been on a motion to reconsider without any specific language after that. So you are our presiding officer today. Those are the two options. And I believe Ms. Kaufman is in the room if we need backup on that.
Yes, our county attorney has promised she's going to keep us on the straight and narrow.
Thank you.
And Vice Mayor Weiss, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to reconsider item 4A1.
No, no, it's just a motion to reconsider.
A motion, I would just like to make a motion to reconsider.
Okay, I have a motion to reconsider. I have a second by Commissioner McKinley. Do I see, I'm gonna do a roll call just so we don't have any misunderstandings here.
Point of, could I, could I have the clerk read the motion so that we know exactly what we're going to be voting on?
Motion is very clear, it's just a motion to reconsider.
Motion to re, thank you clerk, thank you.
Motion to reconsider.
Motion to reconsider what?
To reconsider the transmittal.
Okay.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Bernard?
No.
Commissioner Kerner?
No.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner McKinley? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
Yes, the motion is simply to reconsider discussion on item 4A1. We're not actually making a vote to transmit, but, so my vote is yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
No.
Vice Mayor Weiss?
Yes.
Mayor Weinroth?
Yes. Okay, the motion to reconsider has passed four to three. Commissioner, I mean Vice Mayor Weiss, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to postpone the item until our next meeting on May 4th.
Do I have a second? I have a second by Commissioner Sacks. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, all in favor? All opposed? I'm gonna show that as being approved, seven to zero. All right, Mr. Brophy, we'll see you again next month.
May, May 4th? Yeah.
That was to May 4th, you're right. All right, now to the main event. Staff?
We have the county initi, sorry, the initiation item. We'll have a presentation by the applicant and then a presentation by staff.
All right, for anybody keeping track, it's item 5A1, Indian Trail Groves Agricultural Reserve Exchange, privately proposed initiation. And Mr. Rattery, you are, you will certainly be.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the county commission, for the record, Kevin Rattery, Vice President with GL Homes, 1600 Sawgrass.
Give you one second.
Sure.
Did you have anything else to you?
I did, Mr. Mayor, if you'll give me a little moment of personal privilege here. I just want to set the tone for this conversation. There's been a lot of misreporting in the media and some confusion. I just want to make it very clear to those that are watching the proceedings today. The item we are about to discuss came about because I asked for it. And I don't want anybody to think that the applicant was trying to circumvent any of our procedures in the way that we handle these items. It was a subject matter I thought was worthy of conversation. I asked for it. I'm owning that, and that is why we are here today. Just want to make sure we set that straight before we proceed. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McKinley, I appreciate that. Mr. Rattery, please continue.
Thank you, Mayor. 1600 Sawgrass Corporate Parkway Suite 150, Sunrise, Florida 33323. I have a team of professionals here with me today, some of which will be part of the presentation, some of which are here just to answer questions, inclusive of Cliff Hertz from Nelson Mullins, Lynn Lindahl, a professional engineer with McVicker Consulting, who will be part of the presentation, Alan Wartepney, a professional engineer with Mauch Russ, which will be part of the presentation, Brian Kelly, who's a senior traffic engineer with the firm of Simmons and White, who will be here to answer any questions, and Larry Portnoy, if any of you want to call Larry up, why, I don't know, but if you do, you can certainly have Larry come up and answer some of your questions. I want to summarize the proposal that was presented to this commission on December 15th, which was the date that the workshop was held for us to bring forward what GL would be willing to do relative to bringing back the old swap concept. So I want to summarize what was presented. It was done in the form of a video, which you all saw. There was extensive public comment. But our proposal is pretty simple in the context of, we are proposing to give Palm Beach County 1,600 acres of land from our Indian Trail Groves property. In exchange for that, we will reduce the number of units at Indian Trails from 3,897 to 2,612, which is a reduction of 1,285 homes. And we propose to do three things on our Hyder West property, which is within the agricultural reserve tier. We will design, permit, construct, and dedicate to Palm Beach County 100 acres of the property as a passive park. That piece of property is existing preservation for an AGR PUD. A passive park is not allowed use within an AGR PUD preserve area. We are proposing to build a 104-acre community consisting of 250 workforce housing units. And within that 104 acres, we will dedicate to Palm Beach County 30 acres for a civic site, for public civic uses. And we are proposing to build a 1,000-unit market rate community on 477 acres, directly abutting the Stonebridge Golf and Country Club to our south. That effectively is the proposal that was laid out. But to give context, you need to go back in and understand, first off, what are you doing today? Today's motion is to initiate or to not initiate, to start the plan amendment process, not to finish the plan amendment process. You are not at a transmittal public hearing, you're not an adoption public hearing. Your decision today is directing us to file the applications necessary to go and produce what we've shown you in terms of the proposal being presented, or to not file those applications. To initiate is to move forward, to not initiate is to stop the process today. As I said, it does not mean that you are voting in favor or against the project today, only that you are voting to initiate or not initiate. This is the process. Today is the February 2nd BCC initiation meeting, which was the direction given to us on December 15th, to bring forward applications to initiate. We would then go to Planning Commission public hearings on the comprehensive plan amendment side between May and July of this year. We would come back to you as part of a BCC transmittal hearing August 31st, and then a BCC adoption hearing date to be determined, because your November date has conflicts. That is Amendment Round 22-B2 of your normal cycle. We are not out of cycle, we are simply following a cycle that already exists, that has been already scheduled with your staff. To summarize some of the benefits, we will generate over 500 million of additional tax base for the county through this proposal. We will build 250 workforce housing units on the Hyder West property. Again, we will design, permit, construct, and dedicate 100-acre passive park on the Hyder West property. We will deed the 30-acre public civic site. And again, we will deed 1,600 acres of Indian Trail Grove land to Palm Beach County. So let's go back and let's talk about Indian Trail Grove, just so everybody's got the understanding what's approved and what's being put on the table. Indian Trail Groves is an overall 4,872-acre parcel of land. In the development order that was issued by the county, we were required to deed to the Indian Trail Improvement District 640 acres of the site for their use in expanding their existing stormwater retention system that they have just west of the property. That deed is an escrow. That deed is simply awaiting for the Indian Trail Improvement District to design, permit, and fund their water improvement project, but that deed pursuant to the conditions of approval is already an escrow, waiting for them to fulfill their obligations. We had a requirement for what's called a large contiguous open space tract. It had to be 33.33% of the overall development. At the Planning Commission meeting, there was a lot of misunderstanding about the 1,068, so I want to clarify that misunderstanding. Palm Beach County does not own or control the 1,068 acres. That is owned and controlled by GL Homes pursuant to our development order. The county will receive a conservation easement on that property, and you have enforcement rights as to the use of the property. It is designated ag water resources, it's required to be an open space use. The development area then became the remaining 3,164 acres. We had to meet 50% open space requirement and 66.67% exterior open space. I reversed those. Exterior open space is 50%, open space is 66.67%. The proposal is on the same land, less five acres, which was taken by FPNL on the southerly parcel. The same dedication to the Indian Trail Improvement District, 640 acres. Again, that deed is an escrow, no change from the current approval. However, the proposal as being put forward is to actually dedicate to Palm Beach County, where Palm Beach County becomes the fee owner of the 1,600 acres of land. You then control the uses that occur on the property, they are not controlled by GL. We committed, as part of our initial discussions with staff, that the residual PUD, when I'm going to say the residual PUD, is the PUD not inclusive of the 1,600 acres that we're proposing to dedicate to the county, would then be modified, and it would meet the requirements of the WCR with regard to Western Community Residential, sorry for the acronym. It would meet the requirement for the WCR for its 33.33% exterior open space, its open space requirement, 66.67%, the 50%. So what ends up happening, and I'm going to show you a side-by-side of these in a second so you can compare, we then have to add, in addition to the additional 532 acres, the difference between the 1,068 and the 1,600, we then had to add 448 acres of additional open space on the Indian Trail Grove property, leaving the residual developable area to 2,178 acres. So here's the side-by-side. The preserve area, which is the 640 plus the 1,068, totals 1,708 acres. On the revised plan, which will include the 640, the 1,600 being dedicated to the county, and the 448 acres here, additional preservation, comes to 2,682 acres of the Indian Trail Grove property being preserved. That's 974 acres of additional preservation from the current approved plan to the proposed plan. To talk about units, the approved development order on Indian Trail Groves is approved for 3,897 units. The proposed development order will be 2,612. That's a reduction of 1,285 units from the development plan. Let's talk about the Hyder West property. The Hyder West property is located within the agricultural reserve tier, directly north of Stonebridge Golf and Country Club to our south. It is catty corner to the Oaks PUD. It is across the street from Boca Bridges PUD, and it is across the street from Seven Bridges PUD, and it is south of Rio Poco and Tierra del Rey. That is why we chose this particular property, because it directly abuts the urban suburban tier to the south, and it has the development on three sides and the equestrian facility in between. One of the questions that came up at the Planning Commission meeting was that this project was directly abutting the Loxahatchee National Wildlife Refuge. That is incorrect. It is a half mile from its closest point to the Lakewood Drainage District Canal, which then abuts the Loxahatchee National Wildlife Refuge. On the Hyder West property, again, 100 acres would be designed, permitted, constructed, and conveyed to the county as a 100-acre park. We would build 250 workforce housing units and convey a 30-acre civic site to the county, and we would build a 1,000-unit market rate unit on the Hyder West property on 477 acres. Just for reference point, this is a little farther south in Boca. That is the dividing line of the Arthur Marshall Loxahatchee National Wildlife Refuge, Saturnia butts right up against it, residential lots, and then the county's own Osprey Point Golf Course. So we are a half mile away from the refuge. Workforce housing, also a misunderstanding at the Planning Commission, something that Commissioner Moreno brought up at the December 15th meeting, so let's go through that. The current Indian Trails development order requires a total of 10% of the total units to be workforce housing units built onsite. That results in 390 workforce housing units being required. We are proposing the same 10% on Indian Trail Grove. We will ask for onsite, offsite, or exchange, but no cash out allowed. That will, in our opinion, get the units built much faster, and we had this discussion last Thursday. But keeping the same 10% requirement on the total number of units approved is 261 for the 2,612-unit revised development order. As I mentioned earlier, we are proposing as part of the 1,250 units on Hyder West, 250 of those be workforce housing units. The totals, 390 in current development order, 511 in the proposed changes, that's an increase of 121 workforce housing units from what's currently approved. There's been a lot of discussion about this property and its proximity and contiguity to the Three Canals. I have been told that I am not a water expert. To that, I agree. However, I know one. So I'm going to bring Lynn up. We've asked Lynn to go through his analysis of this property, and I'll leave it to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, thank you very much. I'm here today to talk about the potential benefit that the Indian.
Just identify yourself for the record, please.
Yes, Sir, Leonard Lindahl, with McVicker Consulting. I'm here today to talk about the potential benefits that the Indian Trail Grove property could have, both from a regional restoration standpoint, as well as a standalone project. A little bit about myself, I'm a Palm Beach County native. I'm a Florida board professional engineer for 27 years. I was the Assistant Executive Director of the South Florida Water Management District for several years. I currently work for McVicker Consulting. And I know that one of the toughest things to do in any kind of environmental restoration type project is to find the land in the right location. And this property is strategically located so that it can provide a connection and treatment to Flowway 2 of the SERP Loxahatchee River watershed restoration project. I'll go through this in future slides in a little bit more detail. It also, the property as a standalone project, could lessen and treat stormwater runoff and Lake Okeechobee discharges that would otherwise make it to Lakewood Lagoon. Or this property could also store and treat water that goes to grassy waters in the City of West Palm Beach Water Treatment Plan. Just to locate, you can see in the upper left is Lake Okeechobee. The L8 canal flows down towards the southeast, and then south, and out towards the east to Lakewood Lagoon at a structure called S-155. Structure's located right along US 1, Dixie. So that services and provides drainage for all of the area through here. All of the excess drainage goes out to Lakewood Lagoon. You can see on the north side is Indian Trail Improvement District's MO Canal. And you can see the M Canal that comes off the L8, and it runs into grassy waters, and then ultimately into Clear Lake and where the City of West Palm Beach Treatment Plan is. Just wanted to orient with some of the major features in the area. So the core, along with their local sponsor, South Florida Water Management District, completed a plan looking at restoring the Loxahatchee watershed. As part of that plan, they came out with a tentatively selected plan, it's the recommended plan, that went through the Water Resources Development Act and was approved. As part of that plan, the major component is that MECA site is actually a deep water storage, and it also has aquifer storage and recovery. So you pump the water down in the ground, you pull it back up, and you put it into MECA. The county had explained that they were not happy with just this aspect of the Loxahatchee River restoration. They also wanted to look at the project decreasing the amount of water that went out that structure, S-155, into Lakewood Lagoon. This project uses MECA as a deep water storage, and it really did nothing to relieve the water that flowed from the L8 down and out into Lagoon. So the county authorized their staff to look into a local initiative alternatives. All three alternatives that the county evaluated used this, which is through the Indian Trail Groves property. That north-south line is the link connection between the L8, where there's excess stormwater, up through the MO Canal, and then that northern comprehensive plan, restoration plan, completed the M Canal and went up to Loxahatchee River. So provided relief for the excess stormwater that's in this area. In doing so, it's 1,600 acres. It can not only provide conveyance, it could also provide some treatment and decrease the amount of nutrients that would be going into the river. As a standalone project, that project was related to the Comprehensive Everglades Restoration Plan, Loxahatchee River Restoration. But as a standalone project, you could lessen the damaging discharges to Lakewood Lagoon. Again, water leaves the lake underneath the discharge, and it goes down L8, and then excess water flows out C-51 into the lagoon. And the future regulatory schedule called LOSOM, the Lake Okeechobee System Operating Manual, there still is regulatory releases that come out into the lagoon. This project could be built right in this area, right where the 1,600 acres is, to actually store water that's either stormwater or lake release water that's coming in off the L8 and store it and retain it. The project, this property, is also located to be able to provide storage and water quality treatment to the water that flows into grassy waters. Again, the project is located on the north side of the L8 Canal, so it can pull water in from the L8 Canal, store it, treat it, and then put it back into the M Canal, where it flows into grassy waters and ultimately into Clear Lake in the West Palm Beach Water Treatment Plan. So GL Homes has retained professionals to develop a project in cooperation with county staff that can either be a standalone or part of a larger plan that benefits Lakewood Lagoon, grassy waters preserves, and/or Loxahatchee River. And I just like to say, I'm really excited about the potential of working on it with the staff to see what we can develop. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, thank you again for the record, Kevin Rattery. So this is initiation. The direction given to our professional staff were to go back, come up with projects, let's evaluate the projects, let's cost the projects, let's sit down with your county staff, and prior to your transmittal hearing, we will come forward with recommendations for projects that can be done and the cost structure for those projects. We don't get initiated, it stops here. We're trying to do the best we can to understand the direction that we got from some of the commissioners on the 15th, that they would like to see some type of interim project that can be done on this property. What's the cost structure? How could it be done? What's the timing of being able to get it done? I had mentioned at the 15th that the property's leased out for agricultural operation, you could leave the property as an agricultural operation. I believe it was Commissioner Weiss, if memory serves me correct, had brought up the fact that the farming operator could leave the day after we get the title to the property, and then we don't have any use on the property. So we heard that direction from you, that you would like us to explore those projects, and that's what we've directed our consultants to do, to sit down with your staff and Jeremy to come up with what's called an interim project. Something that can occur on the property, that can benefit the lagoon, benefit grassy waters, as in, sorry, as an interim use until the county, South Florida, and Army Corps work through whatever they're going to do with SERP. It can be done in conjunction with, as a standalone, or as an interim use that can be added on to that. But the most important thing that you need to be able to do, all of those things, is ownership of the 1,600 acres to be able to move forward with that. Next, I want to bring up Alan Wartepney.
Mr. Rattery, I'm going to interrupt you a second. Commissioner Moreno has a question.
I'll wait till he's done with his presentation.
Okay, very good, continue.
She's always trying to break my stride.
I'm trying.
I'm going to bring up Alan Wartepney, he's going to talk about drainage on the Hyder West property. There were several statements made at the Planning Commission meeting that I want to make sure the record's clear on. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Yeah, my name is Alan Wartepney. I am Vice President of the Water Resources for Mauch Russ. It's a local engineering.
Can you just give that microphone a tug?
How about there? Okay, thank you. But, as I was saying, is that I work for Mauch Russ and Associates, and we're a local consulting firm. And I have been actively involved in numerous hydrologic and hydraulic studies of the Lakewood Drainage District system, where this project happens to be located in. And I've been doing that over the last 40 years in that area. I also coordinate the countywide stormwater water quality permit that you have with, it's actually 40 government entities under one umbrella permit, and been doing so for the last 25 years on that. And that permit is commonly referred to the NPDS MS4 permit. And now, based on my background and knowledge of the Lakewood Drainage District system, I was asked by Palm Beach Associates LTD, as the owners of the Hydra West property, to provide an engineering opinion on stormwater issues that could be related to converting the Hydra property from its existing agricultural use into a residential-type use. And please note that I am not a lobbyist, I'm here just to provide engineering opinion on the four items that you see over here. So I'm going to start out first a little bit on some of the, let's say, background on a few things, like, for instance, the vegetable farming, a lot of it on this site, this grandfathered in such that the existing Hydra property does not require to meet today's standards that you would have for new development, when you go in for permitting like with South Florida Management District. And historically, in order to keep these crops from flooding, what the farmers did, they installed a lot of stormwater discharge pumps. And these discharge pumps have a capacity somewhere between two to three inches per day to be able to remove water from the, that falls on the property on there. In some cases, you'll see things as high as four inches per day. These are high discharge rates. And then what happens, and like within the Lakewood Drainage District system, these agricultural discharges, because they come almost immediately, they tend to take up the capacity in the Lakewood Drainage District canals. And this actually raises the canal stages, and then what it actually does by doing that, it restricts and sometimes prevents other gravity systems, developments surrounding that, from discharging, which ended up having to, it reduces their level of flood protection in those developments. They have to wait until that canal stages go down in order for them to discharge. Now, a land use change on this property will trigger requirements to develop a stormwater ma- management system that meets current standards, particularly for discharge restrictions. And what that will mean in this particular area, it's classified in the Hillsborough Basin, so the discharge rate drops to 1.3 inches per day, like a 50% reduction on here. And then what this will end up doing is it'll reduce the stages in Lakewood Drainage District canals, and then it'll provide increased flood protection to those adjacent developments. And what they will actually see on here is when they've had some flooding on their roads, the duration would be curtailed. It'd be considerably less on that. Now, the change in land use will also produce another benefit to the receiving water body, and that's improved water quality. Now, planned developments such as this are required to include best management practices, or BMPs, within their stormwater management system. And typically, these take the form of either a wet or dry detention systems, they'll have littoral zone plantings around the lake, and they'll have other pollution control devices basically to reduce the discharge of pollutants. And how they do this is basically they're going to be, they're going to store the runoff basically in a lake system, and then they slowly release the water into the receiving water bodies. Now, and so basically what that does allows time for the nutrients, sediments, and other things to be retained on-site rather than being discharged off-site. So the inclusion of water quality on-site, it will substantially reduce pollutant loadings into the receiving water bodies such as the Lakewood Drainage District canals and turn the Hillsborough Canal, and also eventually that ends up in Arcostral Waterway and Boca on here. Whereas if you looked at agricultural farming operations, they have, they may have minimal BMPs. And then the other thing they have, they have a practice of trying to keep the water table near the root system. And this typically what happens when you get a rainfall event, they're going to immediately discharge whatever in that soil that's by there in the system. So you'll get an increase in sediments, because they'll transport that. You'll also get fertilizers, pesticides, herbicides, and they'll result in increased loadings into these receiving water bodies. And eventually, these water bodies may be deemed impaired and need to be corrected on that or improvements. Now, the other last thing I want to mention was about the discharges from the Hydra redevelopment. It'll have no impact on the wildlife refuge. The refuge itself operates at a water level which is, averages approximately 16.4 feet NGVD. And you take a look at the Lakewood Drainage District Canal System, that's right by it. That one is maintained basically close to a 13-feet elevation on here. So it's considerably lower on it. There's always a higher water gradient, so there's no seepage that comes from Lakewood Drainage District canals into the refuge at all on here. And furthermore, furthermore, basically, the prevailing groundwater gradient is going to be to the east into the Lakewood Drainage District canals. And the proposed project, if it goes forward with anything in here, it has, the discharges will be into Lakewood Drainage District canals. There is no direct connection from there, you know, for discharge into the refuge. There's nothing that'll be there for overland flow. There's nothing that you have for a groundwater gradient on the system. And then, last thing I want to say, it is my professional opinion, the conversion of this land from agricultural use to residential use will have a positive impact on the receiving water bodies. And again, I'm just addressing drainage and stormwater management issues on it. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yep. So I want to summarize. I know you want to clear the floor and get on to the next stage of this. Let's talk about the difference between what the county has today and what the county will have in the after. Again, you have zero control of the 1,068 acres that is part of Indian Trails. You don't own it, you won't own it. The proposed acres is 1,600 acres that will be deeded to Palm Beach County. You will own it, you will have control of that property. Hyder West property, 100-acre passive park will be deeded to Palm Beach County. You will own it, you will control it. And the Civic dedication of 30 acres, you will own it and you will control it. So 1,730 acres of land that is not under the control of Palm Beach County today will be under the control of Palm Beach County if this is approved. This is just a graphic of representation of what I just told you. There's the 1,600 acres, there's the 100 acres, and there's the 30-acre passive park. And I'm going to close with this, commissioners. I've heard a lot about the issue of precedent. We're proposing to unpreserve the Hyder West property and utilize the 1,600 acres as preservation to replace the preservation and for the new PUDs. And we're setting a precedent by allowing the 60-40 PUD west of State Road 7 and the Civic uses west of State Road 7. And my answer to that is, that's because we're being asked to make a business proposal to the county. If the county considers this a good business proposition, then we should move forward with it. If the county doesn't, you don't. In the future, if somebody asks for something similar to this, it comes back to this board. You evaluate whether or not that is a good business decision for the county or a bad business decision for the county, and you react accordingly. We believe this is a positive business transaction with the county. The number of units goes down. The 1,285 are family units, so they're generating school-aged children, they're generating at the family rate for traffic. The 1,000 units are adult restricted, there is no impact on the school system, and they're generating at approximately 30% of the trips of the non-adult units. So policy implications, absolutely. But we believe we've put forward to you a proposal that gives the county the opportunity to have 1,600 acres of land that is a critical piece of property for the long-term regional benefit of this county. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rattery. Commissioner Moreno, it's your turn.
Do you have your sneakers on? I know staff is going to do a presentation, but I have some comments. Okay. So, and questions? You say that this is a good business proposition. I can see the pluses and the minuses. The biggest minus that I see is that, yes, you want to give the county 1,600 acres of land. We put aside $75 million for water projects, conservation, out of our ARPA dollars. We're talking about $150 million water bond, which I'm against. It's not the right time to ask our voters to tax themselves. But a good business decision would be you deliver us this property with a water project on it already done that the county doesn't have to then expend taxpayer dollars on, because you're going to make an awful lot of money by moving this project down south. So is that a possibility?
That's what I mentioned earlier. When we, assuming that the board initiates today, we will spend this period of time working with your staff, developing projects, and we will come back with a project for the board to consider as part of the transmittal hearing. As to what that cost is, I have, you know, if it's a reasonable cost, we'll pick up the cost. If it's an exorbitant cost, we'll figure out a way to structure something that is, you know, a little more fair and equitable to the sides. But I think we can do a project at a reasonable cost that is a good interim project that provides benefits that we can cover the cost for.
Because that's the way this is only, that's the only way that this is a good business, to use your words, a good business proposition. I have a lot of notes, but, and a lot of clarification, too. You know, there's been a whole lot of press, a lot of it inaccurate, like the fact that you're going to make $500 million on this. Could you please clarify the difference between your, a profit of $500 million, the fact that it's $500 million that will be added to our tax base and what that will actually generate?
The comment was taking off from the video that it was $500 million of additional tax base. All that's doing is taking the units, the pricing at Indian Trail Grove, which we expect to be somewhere in the 400, 500, 600,000 range compared to the pricing at the Hyder West property, and the difference between that is $500 million of additional tax base for the county as part of their ad valorem tax structure.
And then when you figure out what we pay in ad valorem taxes, it's 2% or 3% of that amount. Okay. So that's some clarification for those who have written that, you know, you're going to make a profit of $500 million. Now, you're a business, that's what you do. You make a profit. You build a good product, as far as I know. Commissioner Sachs, you live in a GL home, don't you?
No.
No? I thought you did, sorry.
I have GL Homes right behind my house.
Okay.
Units, hundreds of units behind my house. But I still live in the original house that was built by a family.
Okay, sorry. I spoke. But I do, you know, you have done, GL Homes has done an incredible job of preserving land in the ag reserve more than we bought with bond dollars. Is that correct?
That's correct. I tried to avoid it because I heard your discussion yesterday and the matters by the public, so I didn't go down that road again today. But the county spent $88 million of the bond, which is a little over 60%, the $150 million bond, to buy 2,355 acres of land in the ag reserve. The remainder of those dollars went towards acquisitions of environmentally sensitive land properties throughout the rest of Palm Beach County, primarily northern Palm Beach County. GL Homes developments have preserved over 6,000 acres of preservation in the ag reserve without one cent of taxpayer dollars using the 60-40 development regulations that are authorized under your comp plan.
And if you were to do the math on what that property was valued at back then, and I think it's roughly $40,000 an acre, this property at $1,600, I mean, I'm sorry, at 1,600 acres, and my mind is not working well, $32 million in that vicinity?
If you're asking me to do math on the fly, that is a bridge too far.
That's what I just tried to do myself, so whoever has a computer.
I'll bring Larry up for that math exercise.
That means $32 million that the county doesn't have to spend, or roughly. Whoever has a calculator, you can figure it out and let me know. So we also talk about the remaining money from that bond that bought environmentally sensitive lands up in the north end of the county, and a lot of it is very near where this is. I, being the representative District 1, I actually am encouraged by this proposal because Indian Trails, as it sits right now, those are, those houses are on septic, I mean, septic and well. If I'm not mistaken, you're going to have to be, even to do the units, the remaining units that you're going to build, you're going to have to go through neighborhoods to get there. Is that correct?
We're going to have to go through rights of way of the Indian Trail Improvement District and Palm Beach County to extend water and sewer. Correct.
Okay. And where you propose this to go at Hyder, those services are right around you?
They're north, south, and east of us.
So it's less of an impact. I wrote so many notes here. And I do, I do understand, the water feature is the most important thing to me about this because water conservation, water storage, water purification, you know, I think I said earlier at an earlier commission meeting that if I were going to vote for something that was going to make such a drastic change, it had to be a change for all of the county and actually a regional change. And I would believe if we do have a water feature up there, this is a regional, this is a change of regional impact. And that would be the only way I would be in favor of something like this. So with that, I see you to the next person. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Moreno. And before I get to Commissioner McKinley, just want to clarify two things, Mr. Rattery. I mean, two things that we've heard. One, and when I say heard, we've got a lot of emails, obviously, on this. One is that the benefit that you're offering us is illusory because the county doesn't have the money to do these water projects. And the second is, isn't the county going to have to bear the cost of infrastructure down in the Higer area when the development comes? I think you've addressed the first, and I guess if we do move forward today, you will come back to us with projects that GL will be willing to bear the cost. Am I correct in my assumption?
You're talking about the Hyder West property?
I'm talking about the Indian Trails.
You're talking, okay, to make sure I understand the question. You're talking about the water project, Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
We will develop a project, we will sit down with your staff, we will work through it, we will figure out a water project. If the water project is not feasible, it's not feasible, and we move on. If it's feasible, we will bring back the water project.
Okay, so to the argument that just, it's not going to happen because we don't have the money right now, that is not necessarily true.
That's correct.
Okay. Now, as far as the development of Higer, infrastructure is something, obviously, as a developer, you get tagged with prop share and then other costs. Tell me, in round numbers, what kind of infrastructure dollars would be required for GL to develop this parcel?
Oh, I don't even know that I can get into that. The applications were just being prepared, submitted as part of the review of those applications. So water and sewer is available very proximate to the site. That's not an issue. Traffic, I believe we were meeting all the county concurrency standards. Schools, obviously, 1,000 of the 1,250 units are adults, so they don't have school-age-related impacts, so.
All right. All right, that's all I have for the moment. We'll have, I'm sure, a lot of conversation after we have staff's proposed or presentation. Commissioner McKinley.
Thank you, Mayor. Kevin, just a couple of questions. There's been conversation that the land in Indian Trail Groves is not desirable, it's worthless, nobody would ever move out there. I am not a real estate agent, this is your area of expertise. Are the homes in Westlake and Arden selling?
Yes, and they're selling for quite a bit of money. And to buy those lots to even be able to build is, you know, $200,000 a lot or something like that at Arden. So it's very expensive to even buy the lots to be able to proceed with development. So those projects have been very successful. It's a supply and demand issue. The supply is low, the demand is very high, so the demand for single-family housing is as strong as it's been in many, many, many years.
And the workforce housing option down on Hyder West under this proposal, would you consider keeping that land open space and rather than building those units on-site, building them in part of an exchange program somewhere else to reduce the number of units that are actually being built in the ag reserve?
Basically, if I understand the question, you would like us to consider utilizing the exchange to build the 250 units versus building them on-site. If that's the will of the board, we'll follow that will.
And then the, you brought up the issue of the property in Indian Trail Groves. You highlighted the fact that it needs to be, or that it would be owned and controlled by the county. Maybe this is a question better for staff, but I'm sure you know the answer. What is the benefit to it being owned and controlled by the county in terms of financing a project?
Well, first and foremost, one of the top criteria that the South Florida Water Management District and the Army Corps look at when they are developing their stormwater/major project criteria is the ownership of that property. So the county having the ownership of that property puts the county in a much better position with those two agencies because you now control the property. Much like a little of the discussion yesterday afternoon, the 2,355 acres that was acquired by the county, the county has complete control over the 2,355 acres that was purchased through the bond dollar. So the county makes the decision with regard to what happens with that property. You are in control of that property.
And two more questions. I pulled up my calculator, and the 2,655 acres that was purchased for $88 million back around the year 2000 would have been equal to $33,145 per acre. So if you're talking about 2,682 acres being in preservation, partially a small piece owned by you in preservation, the 1,600 acres by the county, and the 640 acres by Indian Trail Groves, at 2,000, the year 2000, that would equate to $89 million. Any estimate, you know, obviously, $33,000... Any estimate, you know, obviously, $33,145 an acre back in the year 2000, what guesstimate would you be and what that per acre cost would be nowadays?
Well, to clarify the record, we purchased the Indian Trail Grove property at $37,500 per acre in 2005. The value of that 1,600 acres at the time in 2005 would be 60 million. I was asked this question on the 15th, and I answered based on the property being ag water resources. But, you know, the real value of that property in terms of what is being conveyed to the county is well north of $100 million.
And then if you don't mind, if I could ask your attorney a question, Mr. Hertz?
Oh.
I have to ask him because it's sort of related to another client that he has.
Well, we're going to try to avoid linkage.
No, this is just an example. We've had water projects that have been public-private partnerships in our county that are proving to be pretty successful, that we've got the model set up. Was the C-51, just yes or no? The C-51 project is being constructed with private dollars, and they have an arrangement with the state that the state will reimburse them for those water infrastructure projects that have been placed on the property.
That is my understanding.
So we could utilize that model to help finance any improvements that we need to make?
Subject to funding by the legislature.
Okay, thank you so much for sharing.
As long as I'm up here, I'd just like to point out that, to the extent that there's a bit...
Wait, wait, we didn't ask you for any more opinions.
Well, let me ask that question. Cliff, did you have anything else you wanted to add? Thank you.
No.
Those are all my questions for now, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Kerner, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions so I can have as much clarity on the proposal as possible. I'll just start with the last comment you made. You were suggesting that the 1,600 acre conveyed to the county, that land would be worth $100 million?
North of $100 million in today's dollar values, yep.
With, in its current form?
Mm-hmm.
Is there land use on it?
Yes.
So what's the conservation easement that we're talking about?
The 1,068 acres, which is a portion of the 1,600, has a requirement to record a conservation easement on it. For the additional, the 532, that is currently being the difference between the 1,600 and the 1,068, that is entitled for residential development, as is the 448 acres that is part of the revised plan. So the values that we're talking about are portions of the property are entitled, portions of the property would be under a conservation easement.
So what's the current interest that the county has in this, I guess, the 1,000 acres?
The 1,068, you would have a conservation easement interest only to ensure that the use of the property is done in accordance with the conservation easement. You do not have any fee title interest to the property whatsoever.
You mentioned enforcement rights through, I guess, the conservation easement, what does that allow us to do?
It ensures that the use of the property is in compliance with the conservation easement. By way of example, Commissioner, in all of the agriculture reserve preservation areas, you also require a conservation easement. It lists the uses that are permitted on the property. So, for instance, if we had an agricultural operation out there, and then all of a sudden we converted it to, I'm going to use car wash, you would have enforcement rights...
What she said today?
Yeah, you would have enforcement rights through that conservation easement to ensure that the car wash was not in allowed use, and the use would have to be removed. It authorizes you to ensure the use of the property is consistent with those allowed on the conservation easement, which is ag, water resources, wetlands, fallow land, those are typical uses that are allowed under a conservation easement.
So what does that allows you to utilize that land within those parameters?
Yes, sir.
Then, why wouldn't it be possible to capture some of the value that we're talking about with that parcel presently, since it can't be used for commercial purposes or...
It can be used for agricultural purposes, which is what the current use of the property is, and the annual revenue from that agricultural operations over $500,000 a year for the 1,600 acres. So there is value to us attributable to that property today.
What's, I need a little bit more background on the ITD, and as Commissioner Sacks pointed out pretty eloquently during the initial discussion, doesn't seem like much has been done by GL to move forward on that project.
Okay, so that, just to make sure that the record's clear, the obligation of GL was to convey to the Indian Trail Improvement District the 640 acres. We are not required to do any type of improvement on the property, to do any permitting on the property. It was simply a conveyance to the Indian Trail Improvement District. They have to design, permit, construct, and fund whatever improvement that they do as part of the expansion of their palmetto area. And by the way, Betty Argue from ITID is here, so she could answer any, you know, questions you may have on that. But our obligation was to convey the property, not to do an improvement.
And I appreciate that, but I mean, from a larger perspective, why hasn't GL moved forward in the plan that you guys asked the county commission to approve the land use?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I misunderstood your question. The answer is, we've been busy on other projects. We've been busy on other projects, it's an allocation of human resources, but we were, as I mentioned, on the 15th of December, we already had our engineers starting to do preliminary engineering, we were gearing up to start moving forward with the development of this property. Obviously, as you all know, we've got some other properties that have come into play in the intervening time, but it's just a matter of which allocation of resources and staff that we do as we have land available.
So, why, I'm asking for a bit of candor here, you don't really have to answer it, but what's motivating this proposal from GL now?
We were asked to consider, and I mentioned this on the 15th, and I apologize for not getting into it today. When this was originally discussed back in 2016, and it didn't ever get to the board, it was a lot of moving parts to it. You know, where the units could be built, how many units could be built. And when Commissioner McKinley came to us and said, would GL be interested in re-investigating, doing the exchange swap, whatever term you want to it, we wanted to make sure that the proposal that we brought forward would be very specific. What piece of property is involved at Indian Trails, and what piece of property is involved in the agriculture reserve area? How many units are involved at Indian Trails? How many units are involved on the Hider West property? So it wouldn't be this nebulous where you didn't know where the units would go. That was the request of us. Would we reconsider? And we looked at it, and we made the decision that we wanted to be very specific as to what was being brought forward to this board.
Commissioner Kerner, would you yield to Commissioner McKinley?
Of course.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerner, I want to answer that question. What inspired this, or instigated this, is nearly eight years of work as an elected member of this body, and spending time as an appointee to the 16-county coalition on Lake Okochobee, and trying to work with members of our legislative delegation and members of our congressional delegation to get Everglades restoration projects funded. We have been tremendously successful in those federal dollars in terms of the restoration of the Herbert Hoover Dyke. However, we've not been successful in any other opportunity to receive federal dollars for projects that are based in Palm Beach County. We've been engaged in a conversation for probably a decade before I was elected, and Mr. McBrien could probably respond to that, about how can we fix some of our local, our water problems on the local level without having to completely depend on federal and state appropriations? And this has just been one of those options, something in this area for quite some time. I think with the ever-increasing attention on the algal blooms that result in our area, especially during the hot summer months, the issue in the Pahokee Marina, the issue with the city of West Palm Beach having to shut down access for water into grassy waters into their water system. The Lake Worth Drainage District's decision where they had to shut down access for drainage into their canals, and they actually had to pull water out of the Loxahatchee Wildlife Refuge last year to be able to meet the water demands in that part of the area. Something, was there anything out there that could help provide some relief to all of those growing concerns that we continue to have? And I did not make this decision to reach out to ask if we could revive a much more scaled-down version of what had been proposed five or six years ago. I didn't make that decision lightly, but there are so many environmental benefits, and those environmental issues are growing and growing, trying to balance, trying to keep land and ag production, trying to balance the need to clean water and have access to water. I just thought that this was good, and that is why it initiated this presentation to us today. I did that, I asked for it, so just...
And I do understand that, and I am very much clear on your motivations for bringing this forward, and it's sparked an important discussion. But my question was, what was the motivation for you to propose this initially?
You talking about 2016 or the current proposal?
2016.
At the time, Commissioner, there was discussion about providing a mechanism to increase the amount of ag land. That was the original concept of the 2016 proposal. And by conveying, by preserving a large portion of the Indian Trail Grove property in exchange for developing units in the ag reserve, we could preserve more ag property. The concept was, we were leveraging the bond, which talked about agriculture, water resources, and open spaces by doing more ag land on the Indian Trail Grove property, effectively leaving Indian Trail Grove property as farmland in exchange for developing units in the ag reserve. It just was too complex and complicated because nobody knew where the units were going to be built, what type of units were going to be built, and so it just never got to this board. It just, you know, it just got to a point where it was unwielding for us to present something to the board. We just, this idea was to do it very refined so everybody knew exactly what was being done.
And I appreciate that answer, and I think it speaks to some other motivations that GL may have had, which is, I guess, the preservation of land for agricultural purposes and other purposes. But was there a business decision as to why you would rather have some of the density in the Hider parcel versus in ITD or ITG?
You talking about the current proposal or the 2016 proposal?
Either proposal. Is there a business decision that's being made here?
We chose the Hider West property with this proposal because Hider West is immediately adjacent to Stone Bridge to the south. It's got Rio Poco and Tierra del Rey to the north, and it has Boca Bridges and Seven Bridges to the east with the Equestrian Facility and the hole in the donut. We've been in discussions with Stone Bridge for years, and I think Commissioner probably received an email from Stone Bridge about the possibility of interconnecting the two pieces of property so that Stone Bridge can get to the signal. So there was a lot of business decisions from GL's standpoint. Number one, the southern part of the ag reserve is, you know, a home base for us, we're doing a lot of projects there. We have the Boca Municipal Golf Course, we have the Johns West property, which you saw last Thursday, we have the Hider West. So they're all kind of centrally located, and on top of that, we've been in discussions with the adjoining community about ways to, you know, integrate and, you know, create a symbiotic relationship between those two properties.
But it sounded like there was a reference earlier in the dialogue about the average home price in ITD, no, ITG, being between 400 and something thousand, and then the home prices on the Hider parcel would be more expensive?
That's just market. I mean, the market for the units out in that area are different than the market in the West Boca Raton area.
Okay. So ITG hasn't really been moving, and you explained why, but there is a present intent to build out, I think, the 3,897 units, should this plan not move forward?
That's correct.
Are there any inherent infrastructure or road issues or other considerations that make it more feasible to build on the Hider parcel?
From an infrastructure, we've got to extend water and sewer. We have a significant, you know, roadway construction obligation at the 3,897. All of that will tail off commensurate with the reduction of units by the third. The infrastructure cost at the Indian Trail Grove property is higher than it is at the Hider West property, no question. But the bottom line is, I think, when you look at the impact on the roadway system of the development of 3,897 units at the Indian Trail Grove property compared to 1,000 adult restricted and 250 or maybe not 250 workforce housing units, it's significantly better capacity in that area to handle that improvement.
In a sense, is the density that has been provided at ITG too much for it to handle?
No, it's just, it's the cost of the doing business part. Westlake had to extend water and sewer to get to their property, we have to extend water and sewer to get to our property. We have to do roadway obligations associated with development in Indian Trails. Westlake had to do roadway obligations. It's just, it's the cost of doing business.
And those costs will be lessened, but the, I guess, the inconvenience to the residents out there will be lessened because there'll be less units?
At Indian Trails, you're referring to?
Yes, sir.
Well, in Indian Trails, obviously, those are family units, so, you know, the difference, 250 workforce housing units compared to the reduction of units, 1285, that's 1,035 units of school age impact that will no longer happen in the Indian Trail Grove property. The reduction of units will reduce the amount of traffic on the roadway system at the Indian Trail Grove property. It will increase the amount of traffic associated with the Hider West property, but we were trying to be understanding of that and restricting the community to adult restricted so that we at least reduced the number of trips generating from the Hider West property. It's not required to be adult at Indian Trail Grove.
And it wouldn't be adult, right? I mean, it wouldn't be, is adult meaning 55 and over?
Yes, adult, sorry.
And so in your vision for ITG, they would be
Family.
Open to anybody?
They're family.
I think I was more interested in, there was some discussion by Commissioner Moreno about the inconvenience of having to build out infrastructure through the right-of-ways that, I guess, run through people's communities.
I don't really know how to answer that question, and then we do have to extend water and sewer lines. We would have to go get a permit from the Improvement District and/or Palm Beach County, depending on who had the right-of-way in question, and we would have to do improvements along that right-of-way to extend that water and sewer to get to the property.
But that process still would have to occur under this proposal as well?
It still has to occur, correct.
All right, those are all the questions I have, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Before I get to Commissioner Sacks, I think Commissioner Kerner sort of went around this issue a couple of times. Notwithstanding the fact that you've initiated this, or you're trying to initiate this as a response to Commissioner McKinley, at the end of the day, if this wasn't going to make you more money, you weren't going to be doing it. So I'm assuming that the calculus on all of this is, this is a much better opportunity for GL at the end of the day, and there are benefits to the county and its residents that you're willing to share.
I'm not a big fan of the cliche of win-win, but we are presenting this proposal because it is a win for GL Homes, and it would be, in our opinion, a win for Palm Beach County.
Very good, thank you.
Can I just respond to your comments?
Certainly, Commissioner.
I did dance around it because I didn't want you to think that I was cross-examining you on...
That's coming, I think. That was for you.
I'll be concise today, but I don't have any, you know, it doesn't cause me any stress for a company to make more money, that's the American dream, and I don't think it's terribly relevant to the analysis, at least from my lens and how I look at this. So that's why I didn't push you on it, but I wanted to make sure that... So that's why I didn't push you on it, but I wanted to make sure that, uh, that there was some business benefit to this, uh, proposal. That's not a good thing or a bad thing as I sit here. I just wanted to know what, what the catalyst was at, back in 2016. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Kerners. Commissioner Sacks, you were recognized.
Thank you, and I wonder if I could, uh, speak to the attorney, if you don't mind. I, no, Commissioner McKinley wanted him to come on up. Uh, Mr. Hertz, why don't you come on up and answer some of these questions?
And I promise not to shut you down this time.
Don't make a promise, now, you never know what's going to happen. Uh, hi, Mr. Hertz. Couple of questions.
Commissioner.
In 2000, I believe 2015, uh, GL bought the purchase, I can't see, maybe if I can see this way, purchased the land in Indian Trails. Is that correct?
Um, to my knowledge, that it was purchased, uh, in 2005, but I would defer to Larry Portnoy on all questions regarding purchases and sales of real estate.
Okay, so since that time, when this land was purchased at Indian Trails, what development has occurred?
To my knowledge, uh, uh, Westlake, which is adjacent to ITG.
On the land that was purchased by GL? What has GL develop on the land?
I, I defer to development and real estate questions, I defer to Mr. Portnoy.
Good, he's, okay, oh, good, Mr. Portnoy. Come on up.
Mr. Portnoy, you're invited to come on up and join the conversation.
We've got a team here, so this is good. I appreciate it. The question was, hi, Mr. Portnoy. You want to, you, go ahead and give us your position.
Just identify yourself. Uh, Larry Portnoy, Vice President, GL Homes.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Portnoy. Um, what has GL Homes developed on the land that was purchased in Indian Trails to date?
Since we purchased the property, it was an abandoned citrus grove and we spent many years in slowly developing it from citrus to row crop farming and I'm proud to say it's, virtually all 5,000 acres have been in active agriculture for almost the last 20 years.
We have heard through discussions here today that the reason that a commissioner initiated this is because of the sensitive, uh, nature of the land there that affects the Okachobee, the Lake Okachobee, that affects the algae bloom and possibly here in the city of West Palm Beach, the value of, of the quality of the water. What is going on at Indian Trails that you have kept in, in agriculture, which is wonderful, but has such severe, um, uh, environmental issues that have, that have initiated this whole discussion today?
Well, I don't know if we've actually done anything to curtail or enhance. Um, when we bought this land, we bought it for residential purposes. Uh, shortly after we bought it, we started hearing about the potential environmental benefits based upon its location and proximity to some of the major canals that feed water to numerous estuaries throughout the county. Um, we are a home builder, that is what we do, and we have been on the course of looking to build homes. We have bought, as Kevin said, we have bought a lot of land in the southern end of the county and that's where we have focused our building activities and as we, if this proposal does not move forward, as we run out of land in the south, we will be coming to the north. We've made other acquisitions, we are going into Avenir.
But before we get into all of that, before we get into your marketing plan for GL, you build a great house, you have great homes. They're all around me, I see them. I, I visited them, it's beautiful, that's, that's established. My question concerns, why are we here today? We are here today because a commissioner said that there is severe environmental issues in the land that you own in Indian Trails. I'm just trying to find out, what are these important environmental issues there at that land that you've had since, at least, 2016?
Mr. Portnoy, I'm going to clarify my comment, I've never accused your company of having environmental issues on your property.
I was just going to clarify myself.
I have made that there are envi- environmental benefits to this property that can address regional issues.
Yeah, our soil is very clean, it's the proximity, it's the location, they always say in real estate, location, location, location. This property has excellent location to envi- to benefit the environment of Palm Beach County.
Would GL, being such a good neighbor, have you ever thought or considered or put into your business plan to initiate some of these good environmental, uh, resources on this land that you've owned, at least since 2016, at Indian Trails?
We are a very good neighbor to Palm Beach County in many, many ways.
We are.
Uh, that is not something that we have factored into our business plan, um, as far as giving up land that we paid $60 million for. We try to be good, we're very generous, but, um, everything does have a limit.
So in other words, in order to maintain or to assist in the environmentally fragile area in Indian Trail, it would be up to the county to do it?
Based upon conversations I've heard earlier, we potentially are looking to be a partner with the county when we come back prior to initiation with some proposed projects, which, as you heard from our consultants, we are in the process of developing and we need the next seven months in which to, uh, perfect it so we can come back and have our i's dotted, t's crossed, and present something where you can make an informed decision as to the benefit of what this proposal is.
However, since 2016, you haven't done anything for the environment in that area. Right now, what you want us, county taxpayers, is to partner with you in a projected future project for water resources in that area.
Commissioner, that's not an accurate statement. When the question was asked of Kevin, I was hoping I would get a chance to answer it and now I will.
Good.
When we came in 2016, you heard from a lot of the farmers in the ag reserve, the ag reserve was broken. You're mixing developmental farming operations and it doesn't work. We had proposed, we have 5,000 contiguous acres with nobody living there, that you should have either a new ag reserve or have a second ag reserve. It was fully leased, it produced numerous types of agricultural products and it was thought that, you know what, this is an area where farming can farm without the interruption of residents and all their service needs. That's when that proposal came back. As Kevin said, it had holes in it when it came to the ag reserve. We simply did not own enough land in the ag reserve to move all the units from Indian Trails down south with any kind of definitiveness so it could properly be assessed what the impacts would be. This is totally different now. We were keeping all our 5,000 acres in 2016. We were just committing that we would have one large contiguous area. In this proposal, since we modified it, now we are looking to give the county land for a different use, not to compete with the ag reserve, so I don't have to hear about temperatures and soils, I have opinions on that as well, but I'll leave those out, but it's been identified for water purposes. Water has become a major issue in this county and our property has been identified and when we were asked to reevaluate, that's what we took as our main priority, to come back with something that is of relevance and significance, as Commissioner Moreno said, that would have a regional impact, um, for the county, for water benefits. So this is a very, you can call it a swap, but the proposal is very different today than it was in 2016.
In 2016, you withdrew your proposal for the swap. Today, and my question is very simple, as Mr. Radier said when he came up, his first, first sentence is a very simple proposition. My question is very simple. Since the day that you purchased the land in Indian Trail, have you done, what, if anything, have you done for water resources in that area? I'm not talking about the ag reserve, I'm talking about Indian Trail.
Um, we have donated 640 acres to Indian Trails Improvement District, which will be used for water purposes. On our property, we have kept it in agriculture and we, it's not unusual for GL to buy property and sit on it for a very, very, very long time.
I'm not, I'm sorry, Mr. Portnoy, you're a land developer. I don't expect you to farm, but I'm just wanting to know if, if you haven't, if you've done anything and the answer is?
The answer is no. We have not done anything to go vertical on this property since we have owned it.
And this may be better for the attorney, have any incentives been offered to your neighbors here at Hyder West, such as any incentives to Stone Bridge or to Sunshine Metals? And you may not know this, Mr. Portnoy.
Um, no.
I don't know. If, and does any member of the team know if incentives have, has been offered to the proposed neighbors, such as Stone Bridge?
We have had conversations with Stone Bridge. There have been no formal proposals made, there's been no, nothing in writing, there has been no vote taken by Stone Bridge, there hasn't been any votes, pardon my English. Uh, we are in discussions with them, just like we are in discussions with the county, just like we've been in discussions with the Alliance of Del Rey and West Boca. This is a process that things have to work for a lot of different people and organizations and it's a, it becomes a very fluid type of process and until we come back, assuming we are, hopefully that we are initiated today, by the time we come back from transmittal, the i's will be dotted, the t's will be crossed and everybody can make an informed decision.
So the answer is no, there have been no incentives given to Stone Bridge and no, there have been no incentives given to West Boca Community Council in order for any of these communities to, to say that they would approve, uh, this swap to, to Hydro West in the ag reserve.
There have been conversations that we've had with a lot of people and organizations. There is nothing that has been put in writing as any type of binding deal.
Is there anything that has not, that has been discussed that should be made public at this time to either of those two entities?
Until things are finalized, typically don't talk about things that are in progress, uh, until something becomes, you know, official as to either what a proposal is and what it will or will not include, or what benefits, you know, or other things that people are looking for to help compensate impacts that are forthcoming to an area.
So the answer is?
Which isn't untypical, every development we do, everywhere we build.
I'm not, I'm not just saying that it's wrong or, I'm just wanting to know, to have it public whether, when, when you come forward and say the neighbors are okay with this, I just think it's public, good public policy to, as, as a builder and, and you're, you know, I'm an elective figure, you're a builder, because I don't want you to know, which is an acceptable answer, if that's the truth, or no, we haven't given, or yes, we have given incentives for these folks to say it's okay for us to move right next to them. That's all.
Commissioner, I don't think anybody alluded that Stone Bridge was accepting our proposal, that they're in agreement. I think there's an, what they had, I think what was said that they sent in is they have an interest in discussing this further to see what comes of it. And then when they understand it, they will take their formal vote and take a position. Until then, it's some very informal discussions at a very high level that has not been brought forth to the residents of that community.
Thank you very much, Mr. Portnoy. Thank you, Mr. Radier, thank you.
Commissioner McKinley?
Thank you. Larry, follow-up question for you. Mr. John Hunley, who's been recognized by this board for his work in agriculture in Palm Beach County, uh, the same man who is about to be inducted as a 2022 inductee into the Florida Agricultural Hall of Fame at the state fair over in Hillsborough County later this month, the found, the patriarch of Hunley Farms, who grows, among other things, sugarcane, green beans, sweet corn, field corn, blueberries, leafy greens, other produce. We've established by debate several times over the years that agriculture is a good community and environmental benefit in Palm Beach County, or else we, we wouldn't have the passionate advocates here today. But is that, who is actively farming more than 3,000 acres in Indian Trail Grove at this time?
That is correct, uh, the Hunley family, Hunley Farms is the largest tenant on our 5,000 acres.
Right, so while you may not have built any water infrastructure on this property right now, surely he's got a drainage system on it, but you have decided that that is a good use for that property in the meantime? You have not let that land go fallow?
We have not let that land go fallow. We've maintained our ag exemption, um, since we've made the conversion from citrus to, um, row crops many, 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 many years ago.
Okay, thank you, and congratulations to Mr. Hunley. Thanks.
All right, I guess it's time for staff to give us a little bit of their input. I'll, I'll cut to the chase. Staff supports the initiation of the proposed text amendment to provide opportunity for the board to consider indirect policy.
Yes, we don't have a long presentation, it is initiation, but Brian Davis from the Planning Division will present.
Okay, now that I read the conclusion, you can give us the filler.
Nothing like telling the story out of context. For the record, Brian Davis, Principal Planner with the Planning Division, uh, this is indeed Groundhog Day because this is the same item that you've heard before. Um, so here we go again, uh, to paraphrase Bill Murray. This is a text amendment, it requires board initiation for any comprehensive plan text amendment or map series amendment. It is a process that was created to authorize staff, for you all, to give us the direction, to authorize us to go effectively have a work program to bring items back to you related to, you know, things that are beyond what's already allowed within the plan. These are high-level policy changes, they're for you to direct, that's your job, to set the policy direction for the, for the county. So if that happens, we can then go ahead and process the site-specific amendment. So that's the, the actual process that's out there. Uh, as you've already heard Mr. Radier say, initiation does not, uh, mean that there's going to be an approval by any means, it's simply an authorization to begin the work and to do the work and to bring back the professional recommendation and analysis of the application as we understand it and they have provided. So we will bring you back the full analysis and that's always the, the interesting part of an initiation of this level, when you've got a lot of policy things, we can't bring you all the information because we simply haven't had the authorization to go look at it. So text initiation of phase one, the applicant brings forward a, excuse me, a, uh, the text amendment, sorry, having trouble reading what's actually on there. And the idea is that they want to have the text amendment revise the plan to allow submittal of that, that site-specific amendment. Uh, the applicant will then bring in the site-specific amendment based on whether or not this item gets initiated. So there's, it's a two-part process that you will see. This is the Indian Trail Grove site, the 4,800 plus, almost 4,900 acres, it already has a land use designation, Western Community's residential, it's located in the rural tier. And the amendment, like I said, would be submitted if it comes forward and the concept here, since it already has the land use designation, already has the, you know, the, the number of units and all that stuff, all the requirements that was worked out back in 2016, this, the site-specific amendment would simply be to amend the conceptual plan and the conditions of approval that were done back in 2016. Now, I want to look at that for a minute, this is the conceptual plan and the 2016 approval, the 1068 acres we've already talked about, or you've talked about, and that land for water resources or agricultural uses and then the conservation easement, that's what's on there now. None of this has been recorded, it is out there, it is timed to the development order through zoning that was actually granted in 2019 and at first building permit, that's when that comes to you, so that's why we don't have it and this is largely to address the concerns were raised at the planning commission, so it's clear and on the record. Now, conceptually, what they're talking about is to take that area that's in green that was the water resources and add the 532 acres to bring it up to the 1,600 acres and then change it over to being land for water resources and agricultural purposes, but now we would get the, instead of the easement, we would get the fee ownership of it for all the benefits. Uh, obviously, and Mr. Radier went into it to some detail, uh, there was a lot of other moving parts in that approval, it reduces the number of units, that would be the development area, we're not going into all the land that they talk about for saving for additional open space, it's just, it's part of it that's out there. Again, that would be part of the site-specific amendment. The site specific, or Hyder is the other part, the West Hyder area and the ag reserve, it's only 683 acres, there is no site-specific amendment here, but the text amendment would amend the policies for the agricultural reserve, would allow the 6040 development area west of State Road 7, that's something that's prohibited, it would allow for the civic uses. These are the things that are the major policy issues that would prevent them from coming in with this right now. Uh, it does not, and also, just for clarity, it does not affect the bond purchase, uh, that we've all talked about for some time over the years. It just, it's not involved, it's not a one-for-one, there is no, uh, transfer for that, just trying to keep that, uh, clear. So in the text amendment, at a very high level, it's modifying multiple objectives within the future land use element of the plan, the Western Community's residential overlay and the land use designation. Those were what was created back in 2016, specific for the Indian Trail Grove's property in the rural tier. They also are proposing policy changes for the ag reserves I've talked about, uh, and also potentially to create a new land, or not land use, overlay out in the ag reserve for the West Hyder overlay and then the map series amendment as well, which is the, the specific amendments that identify all the overlays in the comprehensive plan, or identify in the comp plan. If it's initiated, they would amend the comp plan, our ordinance back in 2016 for the conceptual plan and the conditions of approval, reduce the number of units as Mr. Radier went over, uh, reduce the overall intensity of the, the non-residential and then in zoning, we actually have the applications in for all the development order amendments, there's six for this, the existing ag reserve PUDs, the unwinding of all those preserves, the two new development orders for the Hyder West and the development order amendment for... for Indian Trails Grove. So nine zoning development orders plus this will obviously necessitate other code changes. So there will be increased work, but that's what we do. We do the work that, you know, comes in. Ag reserve issues and implications. I said we don't have a full staff report. You have an identification of a lot of issues. These are the implications and issues we can identify, and we want to put them out there because this is part of what initiation is. If there are concerns, this is the time to identify them to give us direction on that. So obviously, Indian Trail Grove would be linked with the rural tier, or the rural tier in Indian Trails Grove would be linked with the agricultural reserve. You would have the clustering of density from an existing approval, and then it would be allowed to be placed in the ag reserve. So that transfer, if you will, of moving the units from one place to another, it's something that doesn't exist between tiers like that, except to go to the urban suburban tier. It would increase the residential potential of the agricultural reserve while also reducing the amount of developed land in the, in the ag reserve, or reducing the amount of preserve land on the ag reserve. It will allow for those two new 6040 PUDs. It would provide the 250 units. Currently, there is no proposal for workforce housing, although we will talk about that on the next initiation item. And then there's a difference of entitlements. This is sort of the nitty-gritty, nuts and bolts, the density issues. They don't have quite the same entitlement of one unit per acre. That's how the ag reserve works. There's a slightly different one. We're not talking about, you know, that level of math. I'm not going to go into it, but that is a, an issue, that there's not a one-to-one unit and acre ratio. Indian Trails Grove. Obviously, we've heard the 33% reduction in the onsite development potential proposed there. There is unquestionably a reduction in traffic impacts in the rural tier, all those communities from what was anticipated back in 2016. It would allow the Indian Trails Grove land to become ag reserve preserve or satisfy it, if you will. We haven't quite worked through that mechanism, but we understand that's what's in the proposal. And it would provide the increased land for water resources and agricultural use, which we've talked a lot more about today than we have, I think, in the past, and we've got more information. And then that critical issue of ownership and that allowance for us to go do something else with it, us being the county. There is that long-term potential, whether it's a water resources benefit for water management or for water quality in North Central County. We've heard a lot about that. That's something we're looking forward to, looking into or, and learning more about if this goes forward. Mr. Rutter, he also pointed out the onsite requirement for workforce housing. They're requesting to get out of that for the ITID or ITG portion. This would allow for the off-site option or the exchange builder. And it does not affect the 640 acres as already discussed. That's what we understand. So the conclusion that the mayor already gave away. Thank you for, for staying with me here. Initiating the amendment is appropriate. It would allow for staff and to come back with a comprehensive assessment of all the public facilities impact. That's what we do in every land use amendment, to look at all the policies that are involved, proposed, and what are they? What are the true impacts? And give you that assessment. And it would also then give us the full package for everything, to bring it comprehensively to, to go out, talk to all the, the stakeholders, the review agencies, get state input. That is the value of it. It would, it would eliminate a lot of the hypotheticals and conjecture. It would allow us to actually go through and track all that down through the planning process. It provides for an opportunity for continued public input. We think that's critical. This is, these are big issues. And then finally, it provides, as I've tried to suggest, an opportunity for the board to consider and direct the policy. Are there issues here beyond what they've proposed? Are there other higher county issues that need to be considered? These are all things that we're looking for and say that in initiation, you all can give us that additional direction. Finally, my last slide here, the staff recommendation therefore is to initiate the amendments to allow for the process to go forward. We can go through the timeline if you'd like. Planning Commission recommendation was 94 to deny the initiation, or recommendation that you not do it. However, the recommendation is for initiation. I'm happy to answer any questions, or we can go straight to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Okay, Vice Mayor Weiss, you're up first.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, and I've been waiting to be able to talk to staff about this. So, Mr. Davis, is there, is there anything that would preclude us from having been able to direct staff to evaluate a water project over in this area? Without initiation? Can we hire consultants? Or, I know Jeremy is here, and, and, you know, don't want to take anything away from him, but, you know, he's only, it's only one person to, to look at a project like this. So the only way we can do this is through initiation? And would that be through our planning and develop, development people? Who, who would do that?
In this particular area, the county does not own any property. So, and I'd like Jeremy, actually, to answer that question because there are some projects that have been looked at in, in the past. So I'll turn it over to Jeremy.
Yeah, the board actually directed us back in 2019 to look into this concept, and this, this area was evaluated as part of several alternatives to the Mecca site. So we looked at it independent of ownership. We realized the 640 acre impoundment that was already deeded in escrow. We knew about the existing 720 acre impoundment that Indian Trails maintains, the M1 impoundment. We knew about the 1,068 acres, and so we thought that there was some, some potential there. So we have looked at it, and it was also part of two of the final suite of alternatives that the Army Corps of Engineers looked at as part of their Locksatchie River restoration planning as well.
But it, it, there's nothing that requires us to be linked to this, to this, to initiating this, is there?
Not, not that I'm aware, but I...
There's no requirement for any land use amendment. The initiation process is a privately initiated amendment comes up as a site-specific, and we process it as this. Our intent with providing the recommendation to initiate is to enable the commissioners to be able to see all of the project fully with, you know, discussion with all of the departments as well as with the actual applications themselves.
So I guess, I guess my question then, or the next question then it leads me to is, and Jeremy, you, you said that, you know, you, you did look at this area, but was it, have we evaluated to the extent of how, you know, depending, I guess, and looking at the, the overall importance of water storage and, and the ability to clean it? And we talk about the location of this relative to the canals, the conveyances, and being able to move water, but is this the amount of land we would need? How deep of an impoundment would we require if we were to, to want to develop a project? Is this going to have an impact on what's being proposed for Mecca? And, you know, and then where does the, what we, you know, now know is the C-51 cell 12? How does that all sort of, I mean, my concern is, is that we're looking at this in a, in a, in a very narrow way, and it needs to be looked at in a very broad way.
So there's a lot there. I'll try and address each one as I can. I can, so the, the county has not prepared a sort of a needs assessment. What I can refer you to is back in the mid-'90s, there was a state and federal effort to look at Everlais Restoration. And so during that process, the, the study determined that there was about 50 or so thousand acre-feet of water on an average annual basis that were in excess in this region. That prompted a suite of conceptual projects to be included in the Everlais Restoration Plan. Over time, planning efforts have initiated that included some of those components, not others. It all resulted in eventually the Locksatchie River Restoration Plan, which really was a smaller subset of kind of the larger North Palm Beach County water resource needs that were identified in the mid-'90s. And so I can simply refer you to the fact that there is excess water in this region that we know has, but the potential to create flooding, flooding issues. We know has potential ecological issues to Lake Worth Lagoon because of excess discharges and at times when we, when we don't, when the lagoon does not want it. So that, that's, that's what I can refer you to. It's not work that the county did, but it's work that's been undertaken over the past two decades or so, and that's evolved over time.
Can you, can you also address, you know, with the, with proposal out at, at Mecca and the potential interaction between these projects?
Yeah, so the, the Mecca reservoir, I think someone mentioned it, is, is proposed to be a deep reservoir with about, I think, nine feet of maximum water depth is the design right now, with about, with embankment height of around 18 to 20 feet. That is in the authorized plan. When I say authorized, meaning it's authorized by the United States Congress. That was authorized in December 2020. So that plan is, is, is moving forward. There's a few steps that the Water Management District has to do as far as state law is concerned to protect what they, what's referred to as protection of the water made available by that project. So that work is being undertaken now by the Water Management District. There'll be some agreements that'll have to be signed between the federal government and the Water Management District. You know, we've, as I think I mentioned back in December, we've been in discussions with the Water Management District for at least a decade, even back when I was with the district. I was in discussions with the county on this issue. There's been, I would say, a limited movement on, on convincing the district to do something different, but I think, I think as Brian talked about in, at the Planning Commission meeting, and I think I said in December that we would hope there'd be some more active discussions if something like this were to happen, where the county had a different path to ownership in this area. There, I would feel like there would be more potential. I've not had discussions with the district on it, but I would hope there'd be more potential.
So there's, so there's, so you identify both a need for additional storage and, and potentially we'd need conveyance in order to, to get this water, if you had, if you were, or I guess even to just convey the water from, from one set of canals to the other in that area.
Yeah, we, yeah, in the, in the county's work, we, we looked at both of those options. We looked at kind of a simple conveyance route, just a simple connection between the LA Canal and the, and the MO Canal, which I think was on one of the previous figures. We also looked at enhancing storage, water storage in the area as well. So we've looked at it again at a pretty conceptual level, and that was with the incentive, with the objective of continuing the conversation with the Water Management District and the Army Corps of Engineers prior to the congressional authorization in December 2000.
And do we, do we manage any kind of projects like this right now in the county? Where like what's being proposed?
I have to defer to ERM staff. I mean, I know we've got some natural areas, but I, as far as like a stormwater impoundment at this scale, I, not that I, not that I'm aware of.
Off the top of my head, Vice Mayor, I can't think of any of this nature. Certainly some wetland improvement projects that Water Utilities and some others have engaged in.
Yeah, I mean, I guess the Green Kay, Wakota Hachi, I mean, it's a, it's a shallow kind of wetland concept that's pretty similar to what could be established in this area. Again, it's, it's, the concept is pretty...
Who would manage this and where, and where would that expertise come from or funding?
I think there's, there's a fair question there to who would be managing it. Certainly in the, in the short term, it would potentially be our property, and then, you know, through the development of what and where it would go. I think a lot of it would be the intent of the project and the scope of the project, whether, you know, and how far we take it, but it would certainly be on our shoulders initially.
And, and then roughly, and you and I had a conversation, but just to have, share with everybody else, I mean, in terms of relative storage amount, you, we, you know, when, when you and I talked about this, about what a reasonable amount of storage in terms of both for an ecolo, a very, very beneficial ecological level as well as the ability to, to store and clean water, can, can you share that with everybody and sort of rule a thumb on what you, what you were saying about that?
Yeah, again, I'll, I'll refer back to the work we did when we hired a consultant to look at this. I think my direction at the time was kind of around the two to four-foot sort of maximum operating water level for this type of feature. Again, that is a reasonable approach from a flood risk standpoint. So your, your levee heights can be designed in such a way that the cost is still relatively efficient. The flood risk to adjacent homeowners is relatively low. Your ecological benefits of a, of a kind of a wetland-type water storage feature with those water levels and that hydrologic regime is, is a very powerful one. So there's good aesthetic value. You know, something like if you've been to the Wellington Environmental Preserve, kind of on the southwest of Wellington, that's, that's kind of what I was thinking when I was directing the consultants to do this type of work. Again, with a variable water level, but that wouldn't go above, you know, three to, three to four feet.
So we're really, so if I, if I do my, my math correctly, so on the very high end at four feet, you're at 1,600 acre, at 1,600 acres, you'd end up with 6,400 acre-feet of our potential 50,000 that we need?
Yeah, so about 6,400 for the 1,600 acres. There's the proposed Indian Trail impoundment. That's still, I think, undetermined what, what that may look like, that there's been talk about going a little bit deeper there. But if you assume a four-foot impoundment there, you add another 2,600. There is the existing impoundment that Indian Trail uses sparingly that's around 3,000 acre-feet. And then you've got the C-51 reservoir that we're negotiating with the FDP right now on the grant, and that's set to be 6,000 acre-feet. So it's, you know, there's, there's storage potential in iterations, if you will.
Okay. And then do you believe we would need to hire our own consultants to advise us on any project or proposed project for this area? We have the expertise on, and staff right now to do it?
I guess it depends on what, what the board directs. So if, I'll have to assess that, I guess, maybe once we get some more specific direction on what the technical ask would be.
I guess my, my question to you is, is should there be such a, I mean, a consideration? If this were to be initiated, is there the budget available to represent the interests of the county and its residents to move, to do an initiation and be able to look at this? And I guess I may, I may have to direct this to Mr. Rutter. I'm...
Yeah. So Vice Mayor, if your question is, should the board initiate it and taking a look, we might need to dig a little bit deeper and find another resource to confirm some of the aspects that potential exists. Certainly would await the board's direction on, on that starting point.
But do you have the money to do that?
There's nothing budgeted for it right now.
Pardon me?
There's nothing budgeted for that sort of work.
Okay. All right. All right, those are my questions right now with Mr. Rutter. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Let's move on to Commissioner Sacks.
Actually, I think that Commissioner, I think that was an excellent way to look at these issues. And if I may, Mr. Davis, I'm going to ask you with regard to the series of questions that we just heard by the Commissioner with regard to water issues there at Indian Trails. We, this whole discussion today, as I have learned from questions posed to the team from GL, is about water, is about water preservation, water resources that exist there at Indian Trails. It seems like it's a very sensitive area environmentally. And in fact, as part of this, part of my reading on this, the, the state's leading growth management organization stated that at Indian Trails Grove has, has some very environmental issues for water resources. Can we, can we, we can do anything we want, I guess, but should we, do we have the resources to do a study pursuant to what, what the Vice Mayor was talking about on water resources there at, at Indian Trail, Mr. Davis?
I think that's a question Mr. McBrien's better suited to answer.
Sorry, I'm asking about, about money again. I guess I'd refer to Patrick.
Can somebody answer the question?
Commissioner, let me ask you to clarify.
Sure, sure.
Is it separating the money part from the, the focus of the study?
Sure.
Is your question related to conducting a study in the area for water needs in the general region?
Yes, because it seems to me, folks, that this whole initiation, we're here because of water issues in Indian Trails. Well, do we need to do all this? Well, do we need to do all this complexity of ag reserve and land swap and, and neighbors and roads and congestion? If the issue is water, then why are we not, as a, as a county, reviewing the water resources and issues there at Indian Trail?
Well, Commissioner, there was a timing issue back in 2016. We knew that the Water Management District was doing studies at that time where they were looking at different parcels of land all over central northern county. And we knew enough to say, look, let's not just say that area, that sixteen hundred and, or whatever, then the ten sixty-eight acres, that it was not just going to be for agriculture, and then it was totally off the books. So we said, look, it may be beneficial, so we put that slash in the water resources there. They agreed to it. They didn't care. It was just, but we were trying not to take it off the table. And sometimes planning is simply not encumbering something for the unintended. It's like, leave, leave the option open. So where we are now is we're five plus years past the original approval. There's now a much better understanding of some of the water needs out there, and they're coming back to the table saying, well, now that we have a better understanding of what's out generally, what can be done, we think we may have a solution. We're saying it's of value to look at it, but we're also saying we haven't set water policy in a really long time, because typically that's been done, you know, by the regional water management districts and whatnot, or the individual drainage districts. That's what we're saying. It may be appropriate to evaluate some of their stuff, simply because we haven't had a chance to go look at it as a policy basis for other issues involving land use and whatnot in the county.
Would it be appropriate this time to initiate a study of using the Water Management District as well as Lake Worth Drainage District in reviewing a policy for this county on water? It seems to me that this whole initiation today is about water and water resources, and it is a damn big deal, especially when you see what the state is about to give so many millions for water restoration. And if, if the federal government puts together their millions for, or billions for, for our Everglades, maybe we need to have a seat at that table. And I don't know how we can initiate this. Mr. Rutter, can you give me some direction?
So a couple of things and just a minor point to follow up on Brian's. When we first identified the thousand acres-ish as having that potential for use, that was in an era, so we're fifteen, sixteen years ago, core district were working on things. It was nowhere near as well identified as what we found really, most notably probably past five, six, seven years. We were moving a little, not blindly, but we were moving a little vaguely at that time. We've dialed in. Tell you, Jeremy and I met with GL two, three years ago when we were following direction on seeking alternatives on the Mecca, on the reservoir, and looking for additional properties to create the acre feet and to make sure GL knew that we were including the property in identification. Strictly to your point, Commissioner, I think there's been a lot of work done. We've certainly taken a lot of direction from the board the past few years. I think there's generally a good idea. A lot of it is just finding, and Jeremy, tell me if I'm wrong, finding the partners, bringing things forward and getting pieces moving that had not been moving, going back to 2005, 2006 era, where a lot further along have a much better idea. I think there's a lot of work that has been done and a good knowledge base of what can be done. A lot of it's just the appetite for getting it with our partners.
I'm, I'm not quite sure. What I would like to do is to be able to initiate a, a, a study of these water issues for the county, but I'm not sure. Is Mr. Mayor here? There he is. Mr. Mayor, if that is, I need direction really from you in terms of how we would proceed on this, because I think that this whole discussion today is brought up by our Commissioner McKinley, is all about water and water resources and water retention that we need to protect, and that's all at Indian Trails Grove. So maybe rather than get into the complexities of a land swap just so that we can look at water studies, why don't we initiate that today and, and begin a water study of, since it's never been done, since, how long, Mr. Rutter? You said two thousand and, and at least way before I was on this board.
We've engaged in work through the years. Jeremy participated in the work that we conducted just a couple of years ago. If you don't mind, Jeremy, Phil's, you know, the work that's been done in the area as well.
Yeah, I mean, the most recent county efforts related to this region, again, was a very specific purpose related to finding feasible alternatives to the deep storage on Mecca. And that was conducted in 2019. We completed the, the report in early 2020. So we hired a consultant. They did the technical work for us to evaluate three specific alternatives. And so we have that. If you're, if you want to, I mean, as if the board directs to do something different or more expansive or to answer some other questions, then, then yeah, I'd be happy to, to lead those efforts as well.
Very good.
Commissioner Sacks, I would remind you that if this body should initiate, I think it's doing a lot of what you're looking for. It's making GL a partner in this conversation. Certainly, in the recommendation that staff is making, they're certainly not making a recommendation as to the ultimate disposition of this land, but I think it gives us the opportunity to see what GL is willing to come back with as far as their own projects. And I think that this board has to weigh the value of going forward with getting that additional information, understanding full well that this doesn't commit us to anything. It doesn't commit us to transmittal. And I, I'm, you know, I've read the opinion pieces in the Palm Beach Post. I know that people are concerned that the sky is falling if we initiate, but I, I look at it personally differently, and I'm not going to debate this right now. I want to hear what our residents have to say, but I think that I view initiation as the tool to get us to that next step that I think you're asking for, to get more firm data as to what water policy can be enhanced by entering into this potential swap. And again, not making any commitment. Now, this is the second time we've talked about this, and it's really, we've had a discussion about it. Do we initiate to initiate? And now we're, are we going to initiate? So again, my personal feeling is we make no commitment, and GL realizes that we would make no commitment as far, as far as a final recommendation that would be coming before this board either by staff or whether, whatever our ultimate decision would be. But this would take us to the point of expending the resources, both privately and publicly, to try and address this issue that, again, Commissioner McKinley saw as a reason for bringing this forward.
Mr. Mayor, my, my intention was not at all to get into a discussion of GL. They're wonderful, as I said, they're a good land developer. They're, I mean, they're a great land, they're a great builder. My discussion is that Commissioner McKinley brought this initiation forward because of water issues in the Indian Trail. We have heard that we have water issues throughout this county, in fact, throughout the, throughout the state. My, my discussion, and I will table it at this time, is that if we do have water issues, which everyone says we did, including the Thousand Friends of Florida, which is the state's leading growth management organization, says there are water issues and Indian Trails in that area at Mecca, we need to move forward as a county government, not, not wait. Business is business, and business does what it does best, which is develop beautiful houses, sell them at a profit and pay taxes, and thank you. We as government need to do what we need to do, which is take care of the infrastructure and the most basic infrastructure that we have to provide for the people of this county is water. So I want to table that, this discussion at this time, and I will listen to your direction and move forward on, on the issues that are at hand. But I think at some point we need to address this as a county government.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Kerner, you are recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is certainly turning out to be a very productive conversation, because I'm not a water guy, and I'm learning a lot. So it sounds like there's been some interest in this parcel and areas around it for some time. I think you mentioned going back to 2000.
Yeah, I'd say the, the region was definitely identified as an area with excess water, yeah, is probably mid nineties when the Everglades Restoration Plan was getting put together. So there, there was, and at that time, I think there was also an acknowledgement of the C-51 reservoir and the L-8 reservoir, the, the rock pits that are out west that, that had some potential. So yes, it's been twenty-plus years of information about the, the potential needs to mitigate flooding and capture that excess water so it doesn't make it to our downstream water bodies when they do not want it.
So it, it sounds like there's been analysis done both in the past and in the recent past. What's your perspective? What would the county want to do with this land? And how important is it? What were the findings, recommendations?
I mean, I would defer to the board. I mean, I would, I think, I, it doesn't feel appropriate for me to make those statements. I think if, if I can tell you what's been talked about and studied in the past, and that's been the need for some additional flood protection because of the, the water infrastructure that exists there. So there's a need there. Like I said, there's ecological needs that we know about that are harmed by excess water that makes it to Lake Worthagoon. We know that there's potentially some drinking water improvements that could be made by doing those same things, by storing wet season stormwater and holding it for the dry season. So I think there's a suite of benefits that could be looked at and explored by the board. And I'm, I'm ready to pursue whatever I'm, I'm directed to, to do.
Do all those solutions involve having to have fee simple interest in this parcel of land?
I, I don't, I don't know.
What are some of the exacerbating influences when we talk about drainage and flooding and, and storage? What makes those conditions worse?
Generically or in this particular-
Generically, yeah. Because, well, let me preface the question, because it sounds like there's been these water issues out in that area even before the entitlement was placed on this land in ITG.
Yeah, like, like I was saying, I think as far as I know, mid nineteen nineties where, when a lot of it was documented, there could be historical information earlier than that, but, but that's what I'm aware of.
Would building four, almost four thousand homes exacerbate that problem? Or any host of those suite of problems that we've discussed?
I'm not a regulatory development engineer. I would, it'd be hard for me to speculate on that, but-
Well, is building houses generally helpful to mitigating drainage and flooding? I know on the Hyder parcel, it sounds like there might be some benefits, so I'm not asking, you know-
Yeah, I would-
With any sarcasm.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I listened to Mr. Wartepney's comments. I, I have no reason to disagree with the statements he made. I think there's, the statements he made about improving or raising the level of stormwater management to a current level of service with development, I think those are valid statements. I mean, I don't know about what percentage of improvement or if there's a, you know, you can look at five to 10 different metrics probably on improving water conditions. It depends on which one you pick and which methodology you use, but it's hard for me to disagree with the comments that Mr. Wartepney made about the potential of, of land conversion to the higher stormwater standards that exist today compared to what some lands it may be have grandfathered in in agricultural use right now.
Well, part of their proposal involves reducing density in ITG. And I'm trying to figure out whether that reduction in density would help mitigate any of the issues that we're presently faced with. Not all of them, I understand that, but is there a theory that by reducing the density, it's making the problems less robust?
I can't comment on that. I, yeah, without more information at this point.
All right. Mr. Davis, I don't expect you to know the answer to this because it dates back to, I think, 2016. When was the entitlement process in ITG?
2016. I was the project manager, so there's some institutional knowledge.
All right. Well, that's really impressive, because I'm going to reference one line within it that says, "One of the public benefits is that you retain over 1,100 acres of open space or convert to regional water management solutions." What does that mean?
That, that was a, a high-level discussion. And in fact, that concept goes back to the old sector plan, and I'm going to make certain people in this room cringe. Those large parcels that were out there, there was always a notion of a larger regional public benefit in exchange for getting a development entitlement. That concept was dusted off in the teens, long after the sector plan had gone away. It was the basis for the Minto West, the West Lake, and then also the Indian Trail Grove's approval, so that there wasn't, you know, you had to cluster the development, but we didn't want to just leave the land, you know, you know, with no purpose. So regional water, we always knew there was some benefit to address flood concerns and whatnot. So that was a stated benefit. It was consistent with that old sector plan notion of if you give development, you correct other regional deficiencies. So at the time, we thought almost 1,100 acres was a significant public benefit that merited the, the approval of that project. It was, you know, we have a currency, if you will, of development. You know, you get the entitlement to do that, then you give us something else back as, as part of the exchange, if you will, for, for doing that improvement, making all that infrastructure investment. So that was the notion that we looked at.
But in reality, we can't do that.
That was as much as we could get at the time. What they put on the table is, we'll dedicate it as open space, we'll give you a conservation easement, we will not sell you the land. I don't think we had that conversation of selling the land. We were just trying to make sure that there wasn't development on it, because otherwise, and we also had the, the normal problem of a land use amendment. We had to get, keep it, or get it around the determination of it being urban sprawl. The density, if you spread it out over the entire thing, would have replicated the acreage. So there was a notion that we had to cluster the density, get it to a more compact development, get around the, the, meet the, the state requirements for land use amendments. We got around that, but then we also needed that land to have a value and a purpose. It could have stayed in agriculture, but the other option was for it to become water resources. At the time, we thought a conservation easement was sufficient. We've learned in the intervening time, we probably could have gotten more.
Essentially because of the production value that GL's receiving from agricultural use, they don't want to flood that land or use it for water storage. Is, is that fair?
I don't know that I can comment for why they would or wouldn't choose to do something on it. We were just trying to not preclude the opportunity for it to be used for water resources. That was for some other study at another time to figure out how that would work. We were just saying it was an appropriate use for that piece of the land.
But in reality, we can't use it for water, regional water management solutions?
Not yet. And that's why, again, we were trying to account for someone later would have more information and could figure out how to do it and, you know, a, a dedicated program for doing it. We just didn't have it at the time.
Can we, can you weigh in on whether the reduction in density in ITG as proposed today would have a positive effect in mitigating some of the water issues and storage issues and flooding issues out there that exist today?
It's a loaded question. Obviously, any, any reduction in an increment of development, in theory, has less impacts until we go look at it, but the problem is that's an unconstructed facility. We don't know what the true benefit is of what we can do with 1068 versus 1,600 right now. That's the studies that they're proposing to go forward and do. But based on some of the other experts we've had, you know, present information here, it sounds like there's certainly some benefit to development occurring from a runoff perspective. Not a water person, so.
Okay. And then can you bring up that slide briefly that sort of listed the, the policy decisions that are central to any decisions that we're making here today?
I have both the Indian Trails Grove and the Ag Reserve.
Oh, the Ag Reserve one. So what is the current allowable, what are the preserve requirements west of State Road 7 now?
Well, right now, the, the, the only development that could occur west of State Road 7 unless it came in for another land use amendment is it could be an 8020 PUD, which we've never had out there. The idea was to get all the preserves on the west side of State Road 7. That's why we will hear this over the years, there's something sacred or the line in the sand, if you will, about State Road 7 relative to development. There's no institutional uses allowed, there's no PUD development areas for 6040s allowed west. So by default, they pretty much have to be preserves, or they stay in straight ag reserve and then run under that land use designation and whatever is allowed.
But if you got- But if you got land use west of State Road 7 today, you could build there, but it would have to be 80-20?
If it's a residential development, yes.
Unless we changed that?
Unless you change the rules, yes.
Is there any reference, I'm trying to read it all, but is there any reference to conservation easement policy decisions?
I'm sorry, what was that?
I don't see the conservation easement policy decision on there.
Through the normal zoning process, you require a conservation easement. It's just part and parcel. It's in the conditions of approval for planning. Occasionally, you may recall at the end of agendas, we've had swaps to, you know, to affect the individual, Ag Reserve swapping from one PUD to another.
Right.
You've done that as a matter of sort of a ministerial action of just, you know, part and parcel of doing business. But you've approved many development orders, so it's not necessarily a policy change to release those easements, but it is a policy to allow for land outside of the Ag Reserve to serve as a preserve. That's a major...
Right, that's a central policy issue that is in contention here. So, beyond the 80-20 west of State Road 7, conservation easements, and I know that the workforce housing issue is, will be addressed later. Aside from this application here today, has the board ever indicated to administration that we wanted to consider revising the law as it stands now?
On workforce housing?
No, on the 80-20 and waiving the conservation easement issue.
There may have been discussions, but there's never been a policy, I mean, those are policy changes, are policies that go back to really the establishment of the tier. I mean, so those are 20-year policies now?
Right. Okay, all right, very good. Those are all the questions I have.
Thank you. All right. What I'm going to do now is, and I know Commissioner McKinley wants to speak, I know Ramsey wants to speak, but I think we need to take a little break here. We're going to take a 10-minute break. We're going to come back, and then unless I'm overruled, I'm going to have two minutes per person. We have over 35 cards. That's going to be two hours. So, I'm not hearing anybody saying they have a problem with that. Commissioner Sacks, are you going to have a problem with that?
I know you want to break, Mayor, but two minutes is not sufficient. I see folks out here who've been here since 9:30. We have given all the time necessary for the applicant to speak, and that's fair. But to be fair, we need to hear from the people because we're here representing the people. So, if it takes all day, other boards do the same, but they must have an opportunity to speak.
All right. I'm going to ask the board to opine. I want to do two minutes. So, Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do support giving the residents the three minutes so that way they can be heard. Thank you.
All right. I'm not seeing anybody support me on this. Commissioner Kerner?
Well, I don't want to beat a dead horse then if we're going to do three minutes.
All right, we'll do three minutes. We'll be back at 20 minutes after. 25. We have a few more comments that we're going to make up here, then I'm going to open it up to the conversation and we'll listen to our residents. And as you heard, my colleagues want you to have the full extent of your three minutes. I would ask you, if you don't need all three minutes, that you take the time you need. All right. Ramsey, you wanted to interject at this point, and I'm certainly willing to hear your expertise on this.
So, one of the things with this initiation is we're getting asked very specific details that we haven't had the benefit to actually go back and research entirely. So, as part of this, if this does go through, it would give us really the time and the ability to actually research all the uses and research some of the problems that we're facing. Because right now, we're kind of answering some very technical questions, a little bit off the cuff. So, that's part of the process to move us forward per se is to actually really dig in deep with staff and do all the hard research. So, just wanted to put that out there.
Initiation is just that. It's not commitment. It's just committing some resources to figuring out whether...
Correct. And then we can see, get with the agents and see what works, what doesn't work, what makes regional sense, what doesn't. Get with, you know, do a lot more history on the project.
Thank you so much for your input on that. Commissioner McKinley?
Thank you. A couple of questions, Mayor. Jeremy, or Brian, the issue, there's been a couple of questions up here regarding the issues surrounding this property being used for farming or being used for water uses and why it hasn't been used for water uses and who would make that decision? If GL Homes continues to own this property, GL Homes makes that decision, but if the county owns it, we would make that decision, correct? Okay, thank you. And then the Mecca Reservoir, and one of the reasons that this was brought up in the past, the Mecca Reservoir wasn't really proposed out of concern for any type of flooding or stormwater management issues in the acreage. The Mecca Reservoir was brought up because of a federal court order when they repurposed the L8 reservoir, which was supposed to be used a little bit for that and a little bit for the Locksahatchee River restoration. And the L8 reservoir was repurposed to be used to provide water into STA 1 East and West, I believe, right?
Yeah, that's correct. And the, I would say, the reservoir in that area did probably have the potential to address some of the stormwater and flood issues, but then, yeah, once the Mecca site was selected by the district and moving forward, then that definitely restricted some of the potential benefits that the original storage location had the potential to provide.
Okay. And then on the Mecca Reservoir, I think I was pregnant with my third child when they started talking about restoring the Herbert Hoover Dyke, and she's going to graduate from college later this year. So, how optimistic are you? I mean, we keep talking about the Mecca being authorized in Worda, but that does not mean it's appropriated. It's not funded right now, right?
So, good question. What we've heard from the Water Management District is they are leading the development of the entire Locksahatchee River watershed restoration project. They would be funding that entire project. My understanding is they have funding allocated to begin the design. They're starting the design in the Martin County features first, but their plan is to ask the legislature, Florida Legislature, for funding and begin the Mecca design in fiscal year 20, what are we in? We're in '22. I believe they're going to start fiscal year '23. Their plan is to start the design of the Mecca component.
Okay. And then this, it's been said several times up here today, and it's very frustrating that I have been bringing this issue up to address water issues in the acreage. The water issues specific to the Indian Trail Improvement District would have been addressed by the 640-acre impoundment contribution that GL Homes provided for in its... by the 640-acre impoundment contribution that GL Homes provided for in its current development approval.
I, I'm not familiar with all the details of what exactly the, I don't know the level of benefits that were envisioned with that facility. I mean, I know exactly what you're saying, that it was envisioned to be a, an improvement to the stormwater and flood management system, but I, I just don't know if there was a technical design or a conceptual plan that had the details of what, what amount of improvement there was going to be. I just don't know those details.
Right. Well, sometimes I ask a question when I already know the answer, and yes, actually, that land was contributed to address the very specific local needs in the community. But the issue, in terms of why the full proposal is being brought forward today, is not to address specific issues related to Indian Trail Improvement District and the acreage, but because of the geographical location of this proposed property, or this property and the proposed benefits it could have, you know, when you talk about L8, taking water down the Lake Worth Drainage District canals, that goes all the way south into West Boyton. When you talk about going north, that goes up into Jupiter through Palm Beach Gardens. When you talk about going east, that's the city of West Palm Beach and water supply, all the way down into all of the areas that drain into the Lake Worth Lagoon. So, it's not, I'm not bringing this forward just to benefit my district. I think that this has countywide impacts. Jeremy, the, the $75 million that we set aside out of the American Rescue Plan Act, funding that we are going to receive, 11 million of that, of course, is for a seawall project. So, the remaining 64 million, we did put aside $8 million for a L8-type of project.
We did, yes.
And that funding, would, would you be able to use a portion of that funding to help pay for design costs if we were to move forward on a proposed structure or something with this property?
Based on my understanding of the rules of the American Rescue Plan, I think that's an acceptable use, yes.
And then, in addition to that, there was an additional $8 million set aside for the Loxahatchee River wetland attenuation. So, combined, we've got $16 million that could help pay for design and engineering and construction of water conveyance projects in this area.
Yeah, that's correct. And I would include a conceptual-type study also in that pool of services.
Okay. And if, if we were looking to do something a little different and not combine it with American Rescue Plan Act dollars, just yesterday, we were talking about an environmental bond. So, could proceeds from a bond be used to design any type of infrastructure on this property? If it was water-related?
I guess if the bond was structured in a way that was appropriate, I, I, yeah, I wouldn't be able to speak definitively, but I think the bond language that we were exploring a few years back had that type of use envisioned.
Okay. So, there are revenue options to help, help fund some of the ideas that were discussed earlier. And then, Brian, to you, you know, I brought up the public-private partnership that has been successful in the C-51 development. On a much smaller scale, could this project be similar to what Sid Kitson has done with Babcock Ranch and their public-private partnership?
Probably, but I say that without really a full understanding. I haven't looked at Babcock Ranch in a long time, and that's obviously not in this county. But yeah, I think there's other options that can be explored like that, you know, public-private venture. It's not exclusive. We, we're just at the point, we haven't defined how we're going to go about doing this, if we do this, so.
Okay. And then, the last question I have for you, Brian, some of, some folks are worried that, you know, this would open up the floodgate to a whole lot of requests coming in like this. Given the, the size of the property holdings in the acreage, and the size of the property holdings in the ag reserve, and, and the, and the different development approvals that exist, how likely is it that this could be replicated with properties in the acreage? I mean, in the ag reserve? Sorry, I'm getting tired.
As far as properties in the ag reserve, we have most of the area allocated to a development or preserve. I mean, we're, I think the number's been set around 1,200 acres are left. The last major significant land holding we know, GL Homes, has now acquired. It's come in, it's gotten part of the zoning approval for that. There's not really, that I can think of without having to go through and assembling a bunch of different parcels, one parcel there. The acreage, or the, I'll say the rural tier, because it's more than just the acreage, because you've got a lot of large parcels that were there, they're largely spoken for, but there's a few parcels, Leonard Parcel, Fleming Parcel, Sluggett Parcel, that are all on Southern. They've got a different geographic location. They're not necessarily out near the Corbett Wildlife Management Area. They're not adjacent to those same canal, although Sluggett is adjacent to the M1 or the MO canal, I can't remember which one it is. They just don't have the same size or location. I mean, even if you were to look at the Santa Rosa Groves area, that's sort of what the ITG goes around, the western half of that is owned, I think there's about 90 different parcel owners for about two square miles, and the other two square miles are owned by FPNL, and it's a solar farm. So, there's just not 1,600 acres that's out there, that's in those lands that are identified that could have some development potential. So, there's very few options for something that's large like this. And then, Mecca Farms is spoken for, owned by the district, and it's got a plan, so.
So, do you believe, or do you feel that language could be so, as tightly written as possible to prevent the proliferation of these types of development requests being brought forward?
Yes, we, we've done exactly that before, when we've tried to, you know, limit what gets open. I mean, the Indian Trails Grove original approval in 2016 is a perfect example of that. It only applies to that parcel. It has its own set of rules. We could set, create a set of rules that's just for that one piece and what's done there.
Okay. And then, in terms of your staff time, so either Patricia, or Ramsey, or Patrick, whoever wants to take a stab at this, do you have any concerns about not having the staff capability to handle processing this?
The answer is no. We'll just make it work. I mean, yes, we're going to be pushed to the limit, but we'll make it work as we typically do, and we will just prioritize as needed and do what we always do, trying to get the job done.
Okay. Thank you. It's all my questions.
Thank you very much. We are now going to open it to our public comments, and so, Commissioner Kerner, would you please read? I'm going to ask people to please take both lecterns so that we can do this as efficiently as possible. And again, if you don't need three minutes, please don't feel you need to take them.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The first speaker will be Linda Lansing, and then Barry Silver. Linda Lansing, she may be outside.
Representative Silver, would you come on up front and let's, we'll start.
Thank you so much. I was told to get to the point, and so I will. For 20 years, I've been driving up 441 with my kids, and I feel like that Indian on the commercial with a tear in his eyes, I see their future and ours being destroyed. We always knew the point was water 20 years ago. It's not just water. It's agriculture, it's farmland, it's climate change, it's quality of life. Taxes go up when you put up developments. Ask them how much money we're getting from agriculture now, and how much we're going to have to pay out for all the infrastructure for all of these homes. It is Groundhog Day, and we see the same thing over and over. Developments come in, there's always a hue and a cry, and then, they go in and it's the same thing. Now, you have a chance to actually cast either a shadow over the future of our children, or you can finally see the light. GL Homes says that they're going to promise growth for this county. Well, cancer's a growth. It's an uncontrolled growth, and it leads to death. And we had GL Homes come in for 20 years, saying, oh, this project is going to be perfectly compatible with agriculture. There's no problem. And now, they come in here today and say, well, it's broken. The whole system's broken. Agriculture and residential uses are not compatible. So, you might as well just destroy the whole thing and just give us whatever we want. GL stands for greedy landowners. And when they come down to Boca, to my area, it's going to stand for get lost. There's nothing, nothing that the county has to do that because GL is telling them to do it. You've collaborated with the destruction of this area for long enough. We say it's time for a change and do something different. You're not going to get any, any more singing from me, but I'm going to ask you, the commissioners, to sing a different tune, one that's in harmony with the voters, one that's in harmony with the environment, and one where agriculture has a fighting chance. And we, who've been fighting this for a very long time, we're speaking for, my, my kids are in school right now. They're depending on you to do the right thing. Their future is in your hands, and there's really not much that they can do about it. So, I'm asking you, I'm pleading with you, to make a decision that's in their best interests. I understand that my kids don't send you any campaign contributions. They don't have any money to offer you, but they're hoping that you're going to do the right thing. And I hope you're not going to destroy creation, and I hope you won't do it, in God's holy name, because that would be the worst form of blasphemy I've ever seen. And I do, I've had my differences with Commissioner Sacks, but I do thank you for allowing us to take the time, and I'm glad that you consider our time to be important, that you want to hear what we have to say. And I hope you'll consider that when you make a decision. Thank you, because we'll remember who votes to protect our future and who votes to destroy it. We will remember.
That's for your comments.
All right. Linda Lansing, second call, and then Arlene Berry. And then, following, Arlene Berry, Sherry Scarborough.
You're recognized for three minutes.
Okay. Yes, my name is Arlene Berry. I'm a resident of the Wellington Equestria Preserve, and I'm a taxpayer. So, I will, as a taxpayer, as somebody who's supporting the budget, and who's evaluating the business likeness of this deal, I think it's a bad deal. We have several planning boards, several bodies, venerable bodies, that have looked over the various issues of Palm Beach County and created a vision of what it can be. That's starting with the comprehensive plan 40 years ago, then moving up to the ag reserve bill, which we pay, taxpayers paid $150 million for. And more recently, we have Thousand Friends of Florida, and the University of Florida, that did a study, Palm Beach 2040, Palm Beach 2070. So, they studied many of the issues you're talking with GL Homes about. Why are you talking to a developer about water issues? That's not their expertise. You're going to, you're asking them if they will, they will buy the structures for this and, and moderate the structures, the infrastructure? That's, I don't think that's a good idea. I don't, I don't feel comfortable with that as, as a resident, to have a developer do it. That's not their area of expertise. That you had your planning commission, most recently, your Board of Planners of Palm Beach County, nine people voted against this swap. They can see through some salespeople who are here and giving you a very good pitch, and making things sound good, sugarcoating everything. I say, let the buyer beware. You're all buying into this, it seems to me, from the questions I heard asked. Can't we be a little skeptical? That's not the way you make decisions for our county. I say, please, save those small farms, save the wetland. This absorbs the water, this is flood control. Water bounces off concrete, it's not absorbed. What we need is the land, the grasses. It's very, very precious. Ask any ecologists how rich the wetlands are. Everything depends on it. And the whole, the whole chain of life depends on these few measly-looking pieces of grass. It's called rivers of grass. And the House of Representatives are very proud to have just passed the Everglades Restoration Act, $1 billion. The Sierra Club was there, along with many other environmental groups, to listen to how happy they were. And all these properties are, on the Hyde West Parcel, are contingent to that. Say no, deny the swap.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Ms. Scarborough?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Sherry Scarborough, President of West Boca Community Council. I've been up here now twice in one week, so you know it must be something that's very important to West Boca. The West Boca Community Council sees no harm in initiating an amendment to the comprehensive plan for staff to gather and vet information to inform and educate all of us. It's interesting to me to see videos and commentaries from people that will have little to no direct impact if this land swap went through. The biggest impact is to the residents in West Boca. The West Boca Community Council Board of Directors has met and discussed this important issue, and what it means to those communities that will be most impacted, as well as West Boca as a whole. Several months ago, we had a public meeting regarding the ag reserve, farming, serious water issues that will have a tremendous effect on all of South Florida. We need more information on what this means to our traffic, our infrastructure, and our water. We also need to schedule meetings with our community members after we've been educated and reviewed the details. Again, West Boca Community Council seeks, sees no harm in initiating an amendment to the comprehensive plan for staff to gather and vet all information so that we can inform and educate our member communities, as well as the public. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Scarborough. We appreciate yours.
All right. Next up is Linda Lansing, Robert Hartzell, and Dr. Carrie Snyder.
I'll try to wrap it up in three. My name is Robert Hartzell. I'm an attorney, Robert N. Hartzell, PA. I represent the Sierra Club and 1,000 Friends of Florida. Both 1,000 Friends of Florida and Sierra Club have been involved in the planning and the preservation of the ag reserve for decades, since its inception. I actually participated in the first 2015 workshop for the ag reserve. I understand what it is and what the intent was, to preserve agriculture, viable agriculture in a unique area within the county. I've also been around long enough to see the Indian Trails project get permitted. We said it was too intense and too dense for the area. It was right next to Minto West that we challenged. 1,000 Friends and I, we challenged it, and we lost that case, but now that, that area is so intensely and densely populated. Now, I wanted to go over a couple of things that I had written out, that I, that was said today, that I think we need to address. And I think, one, we're putting the cart before the horse. We're saying we need an amendment. We're, we're told what the ending is, but we haven't figured out where we want to go, right? So, our ending is that we have a comprehensive plan amendment that allows this swap, right? But what you want to do is to do a study to find out what the federal government and what the South Florida Water Management District does when they go to look at projects, and to see what water system will work best for them. They do alternatives analysis, they do no-build analysis, before they even get to, hey, this is what we want to do. So, to actually propose a land use amendment that trades something so spectacular, unique farmland, that's in- farmland that's in conservation, to trade that for a water feature, those are two great things. There's got to be other alternatives. Can you give away higher densities and higher intensities? Is there an alternative to do that with another developer that will also give you land? Or with GL? GL may not need that land. They might take higher densities and intensities in a project further south. But you have to look at those alternatives, and without looking at them, you're stuck. You're stuck with what you got, this one little land use amendment that we're dealing with here. Second, I think there was, on the conditions of the easement and the deeding of the 680, 680 acres, the, it's not the permit issuance. It's actually the first or any development order issued. The development order that was issued was issued 2019 in March. So that puts under the conditions, the plat is due in this case, in this matter, for Indian Trails, the plat is actually due in March 2000, this year.
I'm going to ask you to tie it up.
The plat is actually due in March this year, which triggers both the property deed for the 680 acres to ITID. If you, if they don't take it, it goes to the county. The county gets it. Second, the easement, conservation easement have to be done before the plating, which is March this year. All of that you get anyway. That's your bargaining chip. I say do the analysis. I say look at all the projects first, figure out where you want to go, do the studies, then come back and say, hey, we'll do the amendments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate your remarks. I'm going to remind our--
And thank you for the additional time, too.
You're welcome. I'm just going to remind you, as a courtesy to your neighbors, please keep your mask, hon.
While speaking, also?
No, no. When you're up at the microphone, certainly, so we can hear you clearly.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Carrie Snyder. I'm a resident and voter in District Four. I'm a native of Delray Beach, born and raised on a farm on Starkey Road, which is within the ag reserve. Thank you for this opportunity to speak regarding the proposed text amendment. This would change the zoning in an unprecedented way, as others have mentioned, to allow a large development near the Everglades within the agricultural reserve. Hundreds more acres of prime farmland would be gone forever. How many more developments will it take before the ag reserve is gone and we become just like Dade and Broward Counties? Every single approved AGR development chips away at this protected space and wildlife habitat. There's a lot of wildlife even on farmland. Many species of wildlife are on the parcel that we're talking about down in Boca. I was and am still so pleased and proud that the Commissioners had the foresight and courage to adopt and uphold this legally binding comprehensive plan to protect and preserve the open space and farmland by limiting density. With all due respect, it's unfortunate that GL Homes has so much low-lying swampland in Indian Trails. A resolution to that situation should not be at the expense of this prime farmland in Boca Raton. Given all the land that GL has developed in the county, perhaps the 1,600 acres could be donated to the county or the state to deal with water issues or, and/or as a passive park. If this text amendment initiation is allowed today by the Commissioners, it would set an extremely dangerous precedent for the potential destruction of remaining farmland in the AGR. How much development is enough? When will this stop? The ag reserve is only 20 years old, give or take a year. It's too soon in its life cycle to begin ending its existence. If we're truly serious about improving workforce housing, developers could go into older, more mature eastern neighborhoods and improve the quantity and quality of housing and life there. Much of the workforce already lives in the older eastern parts of the county, as opposed to taking more prime farmland, which is, in fact, low-hanging fruit that's already been cleared and leveled, and it's much more cost-efficiently developed. It's been mentioned that the 1,600 acres could be used to improve water quality issues. If we continue this pattern of uncontrolled growth, developing seemingly every parcel of open land, we will have water quantity issues soon. I encourage the Commissioners to defeat this proposal and to not allow it to move forward so as to uphold the promises and policies put into place by their predecessors more than 20 years ago.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We have next Raquel King, David Smith, and Larry Silva already spoke.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. I'll be briefing my comments. My name is Raquel King, and I am here to show my support for GL's plan for land and water preservation. We know the key priorities of Palm Beach County are housing, clean drinking water, and jobs. This plan addresses them all. Please be bold and visionary with your decision. Let's think long term and think about the benefits proposed here today. Please allow this plan to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your erudite remarks.
David Smith, Gregory Place in West Palm Beach. I have been a resident of Palm Beach County since 1956, with the exception of three years in the military. I've seen a lot, and there is an advantage to being the same age as old people. I've seen a lot. I've seen a lot of changes. Some of them I like, and some of them I don't. I came here today wondering if the agricultural reserve, which is such a great idea, is the intent of that reserve capable of being transferred to or extended to other properties in an efficient and effective manner and not just limited to the ag reserve? Those questions that I had sort of got answered by the dialogue that's been going on up in the dais here. The main answer to my questions is insufficient information. So your job is to proceed today either with the initiation or not. I support the initiation because I want to see the conversation continue about what we can do with a three or four to one swap on land usage to be able to benefit some of the water problems that we have. And we know that between South Water Management and the Lakshasti Slough and all of these other entities that are trying to deal with these issues of growth in South Florida are relative and important. It was brought up today that maybe there's a different way. Maybe you don't have to go through this whole process yourself. You can just say, okay, never mind, GL, we're going to go figure this out ourselves. Well, that's a thought that's one of the decisions you, choices you have to make in your decision, but you've always been presented with an opportunity that says, we will probably do this for you if we can work it out. And that's your job and staff's job. And believe me, the staff's a heck of a lot more competent than I could ever be in regards to water. But you have the staff use it. I recommend that you proceed with the initiation. I think you've, you're halfway there with the opportunity that's in front of you. If you decide later on that it's not what you thought it was, it's not going forward. What have you got to lose? Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments, and thank you for your service.
All right. We have Dagmar Brauz, Sheila Calderon, and Sam Sintron.
I agree. That piece of property that GL has at the north end of the county is excellent. It's critical. Water's so important to Palm Beach County, and you don't have to be a water expert to know that. With the green algae and everything that's in the waterways in the northern end of our county, more east, and southern, the Lake Worth Lagoon and whatnot, we all know how important that piece of property is, and I hope the county does get it. But let's not get it at the cost of the ag reserve. We've been working for such a long time to try to preserve some property. Maybe it's not about farming, but why do we have to turn into Broward County or Dade County? Why does every square acre have to be developed? Why can't we come up with another scenario? Very nervous about a precedent being set. It is a preserved piece of property, and if you take that preservation easement off of it, everybody's going to be lined up to do another one. We're going to do language so that it can't happen again because it's a regional use. It is an asset for the entire Palm Beach County. Well, there's 70 acres on the north side of Delray Marketplace. It is a preserved property, parcel. The property owner wants to put a K through eight school on the property. Is that regional use? Are we going to allow him to take the preservation conservation easement off of his property for the good of the rest of the county, or at least the surrounding area? Please be careful. We've worked a long time for the ag reserve. Water is important, but so is a little elbow room. Thank you.
Thank you, Dagmar.
Linda Smith, but Sheila Calderon is ill, and she wanted me to share this article with everyone. I think the comment card was she not--
I will receive and file.
Also, Sheila Calderon said, I'd like the Palm Beach Post article, "Land Swap Will Jeopardize Ag Reserve," by Joe and Barbara O'Donnell logged it into the record. This land swap comes at the expense of good public policy. Sam Sintron, Pat Edmondson, and Christine Hemphill.
Good day. I wish to speak again in support of the ag reserve. As Jogi Berra would have said, this is deja vu all over again. We could, we could have averted these meetings if we had simply stuck to the plan as originally made when the voters approved the bond issue in 1999. We have breached the letter or spirit of the original agreement and caused some mistrust and support by the voters for future referendums. Lisa Interlandi of the Everglades Law Center stated, "We continue to undermine and gut the original intent of the ag reserve plan. We've ended in a situation where we're constantly changing the rules to accommodate more and more growth. Let's stick to the plan. Voters set aside land in the ag reserve by approving a bond issue, which included $100 million, to purchase and preserve open space for agriculture, environmental resources, and water management. Let's prevent any development, commercial and/or industrial uses west of State Road 7. Some of the parcels that we're talking about, such as the Hydra, Hydra West, is a prime piece of open space in an extremely sensitive area that, if developed beyond the density of the comprehensive plan, can result in detrimental impacts to the only remnant of northern Everglades and Cypress Swamp, thereby compromising the integrity of the entirety of the remaining ecogate system. We should set aside and enforce strict urban growth and development boundaries separate from protected green space. We should encourage county acquisition of land to remain preserved or converted to open spaces rather than resorting for residential or commercial uses. These areas should be contiguous and not patchworks to hinder the safe passage of wildlife. Let us pursue the expression of the wildlife corridor and help, and help provide safe habitat for wildlife and fauna." You know, a previous issue in a newspaper said that, that things are not the same as they were in 1999. They're just not. We have to, we have to, we have to get current with the times and recognize our new reality. I agree, but for the wrong reason. Our new reality is that the environment has degraded as evidenced by the dismal success of the Global COP26 Climate Conference, less yet to curb global warming. Our Anthropocene Age is causing calamities of global proportions, and there is no Planet B. It has been noted that the PBC Planning Commission has always had the foresight to protect the county's resources that only, that only provide ecological benefits today, but also protect the environmentally sensitive areas for generations to come. That includes people here with children.
Thank you so much for your comments.
And can I say something else real quick on the deity? We say that the Bible says in the pre-Aboriginal, in the Bible, which is Judeo-Christian, we have been charged of the garden, we have to tend to it. And this goes back to even the Sumerian Epic of Gilgamesh epic, which, you know, so--
We appreciate your comments. Thank you.
Christine Hemphill, Lake Worth, Florida. We bought our house here in 1996 and have been following the agriculture and water issues the whole time. I'm a retired scientist for agricultural research in seeds and food crops. And I can tell you that one thing I don't hear today so much is the importance of the ag reserve, but I know that you all have probably studied all of the development of it and all of the things in the district that pertain to the soil and the special issues, as well as the fact that in the news, we are seeing shortages and issues changing as our trade agreements have changed in farm commodities worldwide. And in the future, we are going to need to be more sustainable here in the United States. Palm Beach County remaining in the top. This side of Nagualas, Arizona, in some crops year-round, in some crops, certain months of the year were first, and another time were second, depending. We are highly depended on by the rest of the community, and I think that's extremely important not to forget. So every inch of that ag reserve is important, and to me, I would say 60/40 and 80/20 was too much already. So we need to preserve and stick with that. We aren't here today for Sophie's Choice. In reality, the Indian Trails water issue is completely different from the ag reserve, and they shouldn't be linked in any way whatsoever, which is why I think you should eliminate this whole swap conversation. Some of you alluded to the fact that you should instigate your own study of water again, which is a fabulous idea, and the Indian Trails issue can be represented later. One thing you will be seeing more of when that issue comes due in March. And also, you have lots of land. GL's not going to stop developing, so there's other places outside of the ag reserve that you could consider with them for a future swap in some other manner whatsoever, if swapping is your only idea. My chance of guess is that the environmental community will jump behind you the minute you want to preserve something in Indian Trails, and they will be working hard to support you to do that. Right now, the real issue is you have a comprehensive plan that's holding, and nobody is begging any further than what the law lets you stick with. And you should stick with that 60/40, draw the line in the sand, and let agriculture have its life here in Palm Beach County, which will be sustainable and will make the county more valuable than homes. And one thing, just on the news, Tampa and Miami in the last year had 17% of their housing, new housing, or sales, Wall Street invested. So our housing market isn't going to be solved by these additional homes here or there. That's really not the answer. And the ag reserve and Indian Trails are separate. So please vote no, and then start your new water study down the road.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Pat Edmondson, second call.
Oh, she left, I think.
She left?
I think she did.
She opposes. Linda Smith, Drew Martin, and Joseph O'Donnell.
Frequent flyer miles here. Linda Smith, Jupiter, Florida. First, I would like to support the Planning Commission's vote to not initiate. Please listen to your Planning Commission. Speaking about business discussions, these meetings do cost a lot of money and a lot of human capital. Just look around. Our time may be valued differently, depending on who we're talking about, but time is an infinite, is a finite resource. If the Commission just held the line on private initiatives and tax amendments and all these things, and just stick with the existing comprehensive plan, we could all be off doing other things. GL Homes would continue to build homes with the existing rules. They're not going to stop building homes, and that's great. But the requests would slowly stop. Because the requests were getting approved, more came down the pike, in my opinion. I agree currently the federal and state money may be coming. I understand that's not a given yet, but the 1,600 acres seem to be very important. I would like to clarify a previous statement I made at another meeting. I would like to continue conversation about looking at another bond, looking-- I would like to continue a conversation about looking at another bond, looking at some North County Ag Reserve 2.0, looking at maybe even the same master plan as the Ag Reserve 1.0, but if you can hold the line, stop with the amendments and the special exceptions. Accordingly, the county is within the guiding principles of the comp plan to prevent development west of State Road 7 near the Locksahatchee Refuge, and restrict higher densities of residential and commercial to certain areas with more appropriate infrastructure, and maintain strict compliance of preserve requirements. And I encourage you all to read all of Robert Hartzell's letter, and I've been reading parts of them today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. We appreciate it. Mr. Martin?
Drew Martin, here on behalf of the Locksahatchee Group of the Sierra Club. You know, I'm so opposed to this swap, and, you know, I think it's really disingenuous because GL gets so much time. You know, we asked for a little extra time for our attorney. I think you gave him an extra minute, you know? Everybody who spoke in favor of this swap is basically being paid, not with the exception of the public. I'm not saying the public, but I'm talking about all the consultants, all the people that he brought, that GL brought in today. And, you know, this swap undoes the ag reserve. It will open the door, and you can say, "Oh, nobody else is like GL." Well, you've got a whole EAA full of people, and who knows what they're going to want to do? Why, you know, to me, and I'm not disparaging GL, but it's kind of like Butch Cassidy and the Sundance Kid showing up to protect the bank, you know? GL's not here to protect water. I think it's just, you know, I think Commissioner Sacks said, "If you want to study water, study water. If you do this with GL, everything that comes out of this process is going to be to recommend the swap." That's what it's going to be. They're going to drive this whole process. And you can say, "Oh, we're just going to listen," and we can say no, but I can tell you, they're going to be out there telling everybody you want to do it. And the reality is, you're wasting a huge amount of staff time. Now, staff isn't going to stand up and tell you that they can't do it because, you know, they'll lose their job. But when we had this at the Planning and Zoning Commission, staff was like, "We really don't have the resources for this. We're going to have to drop everything else we're doing in order to do this." Now, I think it's great that they say, "Look, we'll do whatever we can." You know, I mean, I'm sure in the military, when you tell somebody to jump on a hand grenade, and they do it. Did they want to do it? No. But, you know, that was their choice. I think that you're really doing a huge disservice to this county right now to push this project in this short timeframe. That is just a bad idea. It's not a good financial idea. You could do it, as Commissioner Sacks said, you can investigate this all you want. You don't need GL to investigate it. If you want to do the swap, you can go back. GL can initiate it anytime they want. But instead, you're putting this under this short timeframe, and you're basically just opening Pandora's Box. This will destroy the ag reserve. Nobody even talked about it today, except for the public. We never heard a word about the benefits of the ag reserve. Sorry I don't have more time, because I could go on for a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Martin, and we will take your, another viewpoint from the Sun Sentinel and receive and file. Mr. McDonald will do the same with yours in the competing Palm Beach Post.
I don't understand your point, Mayor.
We're just going to put this in the record.
Oh. Before I start, regarding the Palm Beach Post and $500 million, I personally couldn't care less how much GL makes, if it's $1 billion. But it seems to be an important issue. The, one second.
Joe, we're going to have to start timing you, so...
Just one second, because that $500 million that people were looking for a calculator for, the Palm Beach Post made a very straightforward calculation. What they said was, if GL sells homes in ITG for $500,000 and sells 1,000 homes for $1 million, that's a $500 million increase in profits. It's straightforward. Sorry. You opened the door on it when you brought up the Palm Beach Post article. Okay. The other members of SARI had to leave. SARI members are not against water conservation. In fact, we depend upon it. What we are against is a flawed process that's been followed. This rush to judgment seems to be driven by gut feel, generalities, and arbitrary timelines, but not by facts. That's no way to set policy. Supporters claim ITG Hyder West is about agriculture and water. There's no evidence the impact on agriculture is being taken into consideration. If it's about water, why was there no due diligence performed so supporters would know the details of what's needed and what can be done on the 1,600 acres currently in preserve before asking a developer to get involved? I believe the underlying goal is to move 1,250 houses from the northern part of the county that nobody wants to the southern part of the county in the ag reserve that nobody wants. Once GL gets approval, there will be a long line of developers with projects for the remaining 12,000 acres of preserved land in the reserve. Pandora's Box will have been opened. Regarding the proposal, supporters claim the land is, the 1,600 acres is worth $100 million. If that's correct, that says land at ITG is worth more than land in the ag reserve based on recent sales. I'm not sure that's correct. There's $10 million in additional taxes have been talked about, but what hasn't been talked about is the $11.8 million that the county has to spend to realize that 10. 80/20 versus 60/40, there's no rationale except increased profits. Preserved land decreases by 600 acres in the ag reserve. The developer is giving the sleeves out of his vests. 66% of the land he's giving to the county is already in preserve. The Commission is getting the cart before the horse. Before making a decision that risks 13,000 acres of preserved land, jeopardizes survival of the ag reserve, and puts our businesses at risk, please step back from this rush to judgment and insist the county do its homework regarding water preservation. Please put further dialogue with GL on hold. There's no more you can learn from them until you've done your homework. You have their proposal. Only when water preservation due diligence is completed will commissioners be equipped to make an informed decision. There's no downside to doing things the right way.
Thank you, Joe. We appreciate it.
Finally, enabling a private company to significantly increase profits comes at the expense of good public policy and revokes a promise commissioners have made to the public to protect preserved land in the ag reserve.
Thank you. We have to cut you off there.
All right. Next up is Gail Ladd, Lorna Wallace, and then Jim Knight.
Knows Jim Knight just gets up as quick as he can, just in case.
Mayor Vice Manors, Commissioners Jim Knight, 740 Havana Drive, Boca Raton, Florida. I'm a native Palm Beach County, 57 years. Seen a lot of changes and so forth, and there's been recent articles, which have been going on for quite a while, about workforce housing and the need for 66,000 units. There's been a lot of discussion about not having diversity in the ag reserve. I think it's important. I personally would want to see GL Homes build these units at the location and build them as for-sale units. I think that's something we desperately need there. According to the 2021 flyer for Palm Beach County, the workforce housing rates would be $168,000 to $313,000. Recently published in the paper, the median price for Palm Beach County homes is $475,000. It's rounded up to $500,000. I believe in this area, you're closer to an average of $1 million for the homes, and to be able to have an average of roughly $225,000 by merging the two, 168 and 313, that would be a huge benefit. It may be only 250 homes, but that's 250 new homes of the 66,000 units, according to the county's study recently in 2000, that it would be needed, I'm sorry, 2000, maybe it was 2000, that's needed by 2025. So I don't know. I'm sure that number has grown. We all know how rents have gone up and everything else. I also look to the infrastructure. You look at this location here, you've got 600 highway out front. You can get those homes in and out. There's not going to be pressure on the schools because of the fact that you've got 55 in older community. So I would, you know, support, I don't know all the specifics, and I'm not paid, I'm not working for GL Homes anyway, shape or form. I've just lived here a long time, and I think it's important to at least look at and see and explore. And water preservation is important across the entire county, not just part of it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Knight.
All right, Gail Ladd?
Yes, I originally said I didn't want to speak, but since I've been listening all afternoon and all morning, I'm Gail Ladd from Jupiter, Florida. And I just want to have you realize that you have a Planning and Zoning Commission that said that overwhelmingly that they oppose this. So I just want you to think about that, and why do you have one if you don't take their advice? So thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm probably getting the name wrong a little bit, but Lorna Wallace from Seahorse Bay Drive. Catherine Murray?
She left.
Okay, she does not wish to speak, but please do not approve any Indian Trails ag reserve exchange uphold promises made to taxpayers via bond issue. Build confidence that county conservation lands, ag lands are kept in perpetuity. Overdevelopment of ag reserve infrastructure, roads, schools, water issues do not allow urban encroachment on Locks National Wildlife Refuge. Paul Lamora. And then Betty Argu.
Good afternoon. If anyone cares, Punxsutawney Phil did see his shadow. My name is Paul Lamora. I believe this is my third or fourth time here for this issue. We have a great plan before us today. It warrants an opportunity to go through the process. I want to see what can happen on those 1,600 acres. Let's not pass up a chance to review the proposal, go through the process, and allow the project to stand on its merits. This is only the first meeting and many to come if we move forward. That's it. Thank you. Please vote yes.
Thank you so much for your remarks.
Thank you. Robert McLaughlin does not wish to speak, but I support 100% the restricted development of the agricultural reserve. No additional development, none. Jeffrey Bell?
Good afternoon. Jeffrey Bell, live on Singer Island, a native Palm Beach County resident all my life. I was here when you talked about it in December. I like the thinking forward, big picture, we're all connected, but this one little piece of property seems to be located in a unique place. I don't really like managing it by exception, but I think we need to look at what our overall goals are. Clean water, especially, I live near the Lake Worth inlet, and when they let water out Okeechobee, it turns the ocean brown. I don't think that's okay. If they want to help clean the water on their way out, I'm all in favor of that. Affordable housing is getting rarer, and this is a unique opportunity to add to the, as the gentleman said there, we need more of that. 1,600 acres could help reduce flooding, provide numerous benefits, environmental, not just in northern, but as far as the whole system. The plan has country, countywide benefits, so please allow it to move forward. I support the initiation, and thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your remarks.
Betty Argu, Myrna Rosoff, and Barbara Roth.
I was going to say good evening, but it's still good afternoon, Mayor Weinroth and the rest of the commissioners. I appreciate the time and the opportunity to speak. My name is Betty Argu. I am the Vice President of Indian Trail Improvement District, and I have a lot of things that I could be saying, and I've got three minutes to say it, so I'm going to try and get the important things out. First of all, I want to say, I am not paid to be here. GL Homes has not done anything to promise Indian Trail that we're going to get something if we come here and support them. I actually am offended that anybody would make that comment, that that's the only reason why people show up to support them. Most of you know me. I have fought against overdevelopment. I wasn't happy about Minto being approved in our area, I wasn't happy about GL Homes being approved. However, one of the things that I've learned through it is that we have what we have, and we have to try to fix it moving forward. The brass tacks of this, when you look at the bottom line of what's being proposed as a developer that is proposing to solve identified needs, and at the end of the day, we get less development, but it's a win-win, okay? I understand the concerns about the ag reserve, but I think there's a misunderstanding about the ag reserve, too. When I first started learning about the ag reserve, if I believed everything I read in the paper and what people were saying to me, I thought that the bond purchased all the land in the ag reserve, and it did not, okay? In fact, it bought land in Jupiter, it preserved land in Jupiter. It did not preserve land in the area where I live. It could have preserved this very unique piece of property. For the county to float a bond to purchase that land at $100 million plus, that's just not, I think there's a better path forward. I do want to share with you that our board has voted to support the land swap proposal in 2016, and again, recently. I attended here on December 15th, and I told you then that there's far more infrastructure in the ag reserve to support this. And again, I don't want this to be about us against them, but you end up with less development. Farming is very viable, and it's not swampland. 100% of the land is being farmed. ITID collects money every year for the impact on our roads and the trucks. 640 acres that GL gave to ITID is for GL, or for Indian Trails drainage. It's separate and apart from this. There's two different issues. There's Indian Trail drainage issues, and then there's the regional drainage issues. And thank you, Commissioner McKinley, for trying to explain that. I urge each one of you to actually set, I'm going to actually suggest that our district engineer, Jay Foy, and Alan Ritepni would meet with each one of you and actually give you the history of how the L-8 basin drainage has been left out, and how it all ties into the MECA and the SERP and everything else. That's, I don't want to bore you here, but I think it is very important. Please initiate today and have those discussions, do that fact-finding, and then think about how best to move forward.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I'm Myrna Rosoff, past president of COBRA. In fact, I was president in 2016 when the GL swap first came up. Thousands of people have gone into their life savings and assumed massive debt to buy GL Homes in the ag reserve. They bought farms as well. They did so not because they were unwise, but because they relied on good land use planning and comprehensive plans by responsible government to protect their investment. The establishment of the ag reserve ensured people that they would be protected by public policy and the comprehensive plan. There are legal precedents to protect landowner investments and back expectations. These are based on good faith belief that government protections can be relied upon. It is ironic that GL Homes is here today to contribute to the destruction of the ag reserve, because in the deeds to their homes in the ag reserve, it says specifically that these homes... these homes are located in the ag reserve, so that homeowners have an inducement to purchase relying in good faith on this. Today, they are asking the commission to do no less than destroy the ag reserve. This isn't just about 1,250 homes. GL has bought Whitworth Farms on State Road 7, 600 acres, which they will also devote to residential homes. This commission and others before you have contributed piecemeal to the destruction, to the undermining of the ag reserve. Reliance and good faith are moral values. They are legal concepts, and they are also the principles behind good government. Before I ask you not to support this initiative, I want to say that I have heard today about regional planning. Good regional planning here involves the county statewide, and it does not sacrifice one region for the other. I have heard the developer himself say he hasn't done more up in Indian Trail Grove because he's been busy on other projects. He has allocated his human resources elsewhere. Well, does this county really think that their overworked staff has the time to do his work for him? In conclusion, I ask you to vote no. Initiation is not needed to pursue this problem, and the best time to kill a bad idea is before you put time and money into exploring it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your remarks.
Thank you. Mayor, will you indulge me for one minute to read a statement from COBRA President Beth Rappaport before my statement? I'm Barbara Roth, Vice President.
Okay.
Thank you. Beth Rappaport could not be here today, there's a family health issue. Thank you. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, as Beth Rappaport. As I prepared for today, the irony of Groundhog Day was not lost. Same place, same people, same topics, and probably the same positions. However, today's topic has a more serious, long-lasting impact than six more weeks of winter, and is on a much larger scale than prior proposals. COBRA was optimistic the swap would include highly needed countywide benefits for infrastructure, water, and housing issues. But as we drowned in the documents going back many years, something occurred to us. This was not an infrastructure, water, or housing plan, and was not created by infrastructure, water, or housing experts. We determined the swap created more problems than it would solve, and no subject matter experts could tell us any differently. For us, the dialogue on the swap ends there. As to housing plans, we are concerned about the shortage, but believe it must be addressed federally before it can be addressed locally. Policymakers, regulators, and legislators need to overhaul what is an outdated system. This is not for developers to try to solve. Today, we cannot consider any additional development here in Palm Beach County without first addressing infrastructure, water, and housing issues on a large scale, much larger than a one-off trade. We have emailed a petition with over 1,500 digital signatures collected in three business days urging you to support our position to vote against this proposal. Thank you from Beth Rappaport, President of COBRA.
All right, you've just given her 15 seconds of your time. You may continue.
Thank you. And to the Commissioners again, Barbara Roth, Vice President of COBRA. I've lived in Palm Beach County 19 years, but I grew up in the city of Miami, the city of Miami, so I do know Florida. A very wise friend of mine said something yesterday that resonated. She said, quote, "This wasn't supposed to be this hard." And that sums it up. She lives, has lived in Palm Beach County over 30 years, never in the ag reserve, nor do I live in the ag reserve, but she voted for the bond issue over 20 years ago. And she would maintain, as would I and others, that the ag reserve is not broken. Listen to the people who are still working and farming in the ag reserve, Mr. O'Donnell and his SARAH group, certainly. Over 20 years ago, the environmental groups got the message, the press got the message, and the voters of Palm Beach County certainly got the message. That message is the same today. COBRA took its time to study this proposal. We did not come out with a knee-jerk reaction when we first heard this. We did not take a position. We thank Administrator Rutter, we thank Mr. McBrien, we thank staff members, and we thank GL for the time they spent with COBRA leadership explaining this project so that we could make an informed decision. And we have made that decision. The more we studied, the more the obvious was so clear to us. The beneficiary is a developer, not Palm Beach County. In the past, we have developed, we have complimented developers, including GL, when they have played by the rules. We have stood here and said that to you. COBRA has even acquiesced on certain projects when we have felt that it serves our COBRA constituents as well as yours, Palm Beach County as a whole. But this swap is a bridge too far. Our environmental friends, Sierra, Everglades, 1,000 Friends of Florida, Loxahatchee, they respect and are concerned about water issues as much as they are about ag reserve preservation, but they're not supporting this. This should be a message in and of itself. These are the people we rely on consistently. The editorial writers support our position. This possible kinda, sorta, maybe in the future benefit at the current detriment to a precious gem in Palm Beach County, the ag reserve, there just is not an equitable trade-off. I thank you. Again, I do not live in the ag reserve, but I recognize its importance to all of us, and I ask you again to judge this for what it is. This is something to benefit an individual business and not the county. Thank you so much.
All right, our last speaker is Bobby Pointer. And if I missed anybody, please let a member of county staff know.
Hi, my name is Bobby Pointer. I'm an over 30-year resident of Wellington and just recently moved to Palm Beach Gardens. I'm the district manager, or not district manager, operations management for the Cypress Grove Community Development District. So we maintain the water system there and over the 5,000 acres of active farmland there. So I know that property pretty well. My dad moved here from Orlando in '72, and he's been involved in that property, so kind of grew up on that, that piece of property. It's a very unique parcel. We've got active farmland there. It's been, I've been involved when it was citrus, now we're active row crop, and it's unique that we can grow crops there, or we could treat water there. It's a really interesting parcel, and it's got a lot of very good uses out there. We have connectivity to the L-8, the MO, the M Canals, the L Canal, C-51. If we needed to make a direct connection to the MO Canal, we can do that. We have a lot of different ability out there to move water around. As I said earlier, we're 100% leased out in our land. We, a few years ago, we lost the largest tomato grower in the country as one of our tenants, and within five minutes, we were able to replace them. And we also have a current list of farmers that are actively looking to get in on the We've been very fortunate there with cold weather. We haven't had any significant colds probably since 1989, and we had the freeze back then when it was in citrus. And even then, we didn't have hardly any crop damage. So it's very viable property for water resource or farming, and I just hope that you guys would initiate this item today to look at it farther and see what it could do for our area. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Again, is there anybody here who put a card in and didn't get called? All right, so we're going to close our public comment. It's now time for us to have our discussion, and no lights are going on yet. So Commissioner Sacks, you have the first bite of the apple.
I feel very humbled to represent some of the folks who have spoken here today, and some of the folks who waited here for hours, and these are people who have developed this area when I was still raising kids, and that's Myrna Rosoff, Barbara Roth. You know, these are the days we had Fran Reich stand up, Dagmar, you remember, stand up and fight for the rights of the people in the Western communities. And Beth Rappaport, thank you for your remarks. I have a statement, Mr. Mayor, that I'm going to receive and file from COBRA with 1,500 signatures here, if I may pass it down.
Absolutely, they'll be received and filed, yeah.
And so thank you for that, and I really feel humbled to represent your interests here because of your giants in our community. And I want to thank also President Lori Vineker, who could not be here today, and members of the Alliance, who have been so great advocates for what we need to do, and O'Donnell, the O'Donnell family. We heard from Mr. O'Donnell, and we have, of course, his article in the newspaper. And I want to thank, and I've never done this before, but I want to thank the editorial board of the Palm Beach Post, which is pretty impressive, because I have been a subject of their editorials. And I can assure you, they're straight shooters sometimes, but they have been very forward-thinking and very articulate in their opposition to this, and especially Douglas Lyons and Rick Christie, as well as the Sun Sentinel with Julie Anderson, the Editor-in-Chief, and Steve Bousquet, editorial writer. There's been a lot said about what's happening today, and I'm going to try to condense it into a manageable argument, because I don't think I need to argue very long. Every piece of land in this county has a land zoning classification. Whether you're on the beach, or whether you're in the Everglades, every piece of land has a classification. Based on that classification, people will come through realtors and brokers and buy land, because they know that they are protected under the county's zoning ordinances. And that's kind of sacred, because that's private property, and that's how we promote and advocate for private property. And people in the ag reserve know that their zoning classifications are as sacred as those on the beach. I just want you to know as a side, Florida is the only state in the country that our beaches are owned by the people. Do you know that? Nobody can build on the beach in the state of Florida. And it's a beautiful thing, because we know that our zoning ordinances are sacred, and they are never more sacred as what we have seen here in this unique coastal agricultural area we call the agricultural reserve. In fact, those deeds on GL Homes state, "Welcome to the agricultural reserve." What does that mean? That means you're going to have open spaces. That means that this county will preserve lands under a conservation easement, so that you know that when you have your families here, this conservation easement is going to stay like that. And what does that equal? It equals integrity in government. That's our job. It's not the developer's job. It's our job. Integrity in our classifications. So when we change these for whatever reasons, some of them may be good, some of them may be baseless, when we change them, it has unintended consequences. What are some of the unintended consequences of today's initiation request? Some of the unintended consequences is there is a horse stable on 441. I don't want to go back to the pictures, because I think you remember, but if you recall where the Hyder property is, it surrounds, sort of like, just envelops, a horse stable called Sunshine Meadows. My kids learned to ride there. Today, there, I don't know how many horses are there, I've been too busy, I haven't been riding in a long time. But there are stables there with horses and kids. And some of the kids come from areas where the only time they've seen a horse is on a merry-go-round somewhere. And this is their summer camps that they have there, and they've contacted me, and they said, "Please don't do this," because the unintended consequence of 1,250 units in the Hyder property is going to adversely affect unintended consequence of Sunshine Meadows. And I hope they're listening today, they couldn't make it, it was too short of notice for them to be here. But these are trainers, these are kids, these are horseback riders, and there are many grooms that live, many, many people who live there, per ordinance, that they can live in equestrian areas, and they will all be not only without jobs, but they will be homeless, because they won't have any place else to go. So that's one unintended consequence. Another unintended consequence is what's going to happen in the National Marshall-Loxahatchee National Wildlife Refuge. A half a mile? I ride my bicycle longer than a half a mile. We're going to have a development within a half a mile of a wildlife refuge? Let's get real. That has been set aside for environmental uses, it's a sensitive environmental area, and we're going to have houses within a half a mile of that very precious environmental area. And that happens right here, at this dius. And that is an unintended consequence. Of course, we're going to look also at the zoning classifications for land all along 441. That happened earlier today. We can't have light industrial along 441 if we have residential houses. You want to see accidents happen, go along Lyons Road today and see what it's like with the folks living in Bridges, and Seven Bridges, and Lotus, and Meysner. When they try to go out, and they're trying to make that turnpike, they're trying to get the kids to school, and there's landscaping trucks moving with their trailers along that same highway. It doesn't mix. It doesn't go together. So what we're going to do is we're going to move landscaping companies on 441, because we don't have space for them, and Heritage Farms and other places. But are we going to do that with all this residential on 441? Not a good mix. We're going to need to look at that classification of zoning as an unintended consequence of this. So I like to look at the review of what happened. Where did we get here today? How did this happen chronologically? So in 1999, before any of us were sitting here, I would imagine, there was $150 million in bonds to buy land within the ag reserve, as they say, in God's country. God's country is west of 441. The purpose was to preserve agricultural land. 2012, GL bought a farm west on 441 for $1.8 million. And why did they buy this farm? They did it for a good reason. Because we, in this county commission, allowed them to build density and then send their TDRs, and I'm learning all this because Patricia's been helping me with these words, to send these TDRs to a land that would keep them in one cluster. And that's a good idea, they did a good idea. So when they built Bridges and Seven Bridges and Lotus with zero lot line, they put that land that they were supposed to keep in that section, they sent it over to the Hyder property. So that Hyder property, with the conservation easement, holds all that preserved land. And so all that preserved land was there, was used for preservation, it's been used for active farming today. I don't know if that's where the Peppers came from, but whatever they're doing, they're farming there today. Then in 2016, GL bought 5,000 acres Then in 2016, GL bought 5,000 acres in Indian Trails Grove. They proposed a swap in 2018 of that land in Indian Trails for Ag Reserve. Then they withdrew it. Now, that was initiated by GL. Today, it's not initiated by GL. It's initiated by one of the commissioners. It's initiated by one of the commissioners for water reasons. But let's go back to the chronology. July in 1998, we developed a master plan, quote, "to preserve and enhance agricultural activity, environmental and water resources in the Ag Reserve, and produce a master development plan compatible with these goals." Where did this originate from? Well, I'm an attorney. I like to go back to the law. It's taken me a while to get there, but this is it. Chapter 163 of Florida statutes require that every county in the state of Florida develop a master plan. So we, as a county, developed a master plan. And in that master plan, we had these conservation easements. And that's, if you want to find it in our ordinances, 1.51, page 35 of the Future Land Use Element. So we're getting right down to the nitty-gritty of what we're doing today. We're changing ordinances. We're moving laws around. It's a policy decision, which we, folks, have the authority to do. So it's a great responsibility for us as we move forward. But some of us will say, and it's been said in the newspapers, that this is just an initiation. Let's just see what happens. This reminds me of when I went to a restaurant, and the restaurant was closed. And I'm hungry. This is during the COVID thing. I needed to get some food. And I could see them inside. So I knocked on the door. I'm hungry. I want to get some food. I said, "Let me just go ahead and look at the menu. Open the door for just a minute." And they said, "Yes, Schlossen. It is closed. It is closed." This is what's happening today. This land is closed. We can't open the door and use our staff to see what's inside. We can't use county-funded taxpayer staff to review something that a private developer certainly has the resources to do, and do very well. I can see by the team you have today. GL is a professional group. You're an excellent group, and you have very well-professional staff with you. You don't need, we don't need, to use taxpayer staff to do the work of a private. And I'm sure you would probably agree, because it's not initiated by you. If it had been, you'd probably do your own work on it and give us some work to look at in terms of water resources and infrastructure. So what we're looking at is we're looking at a closed restaurant, land that is closed, but we want to open it. And yet, of course, there hasn't been any discussion on the infrastructure or anything like that, because we want to open the door to see what's inside this closed restaurant. So my position is, we can't do this. We should not do this. If this is, what are we here for today? We've been here all day today for one reason. Because the commissioner wanted, and it is her right to do so, and I think she had a very good purpose. There is a water issue here. There's a very important water issue. And according to the main, 1,000 Friends of Florida is the main Florida state water resource organization. They say there is water issues there in Indian Trails Groves. They agree with the commissioner, who wants to initiate a conversation about water resources. And we need to do that. We have also learned today that there's $60 million in the American Rescue Plan for water. There's also unlimited resources that is passing through the state legislature for water resources in our beautiful Everglades. So let's move forward on water issues, which is why we're here today. Then later, if a developer wants to initiate a process for us to review their land swap, we're here. That's what we're doing. That's our job. But right now, we're here about water. We do not need to have a land swap to teach us about water. We need to make sure that our water resources are taken care of. And so, I would encourage us, as a county, to use our authority to get the solution to the problem. The problem is water. We have the money to do it. Just talked about the money that we have to do it. Let's move forward and not swap land in order to initiate a review of water resources in the Indian Trails Grove.
Thank you, Commissioner Sacks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Commissioner Moreno.
Well, I'll start by saying I'm not an attorney. I will not be as eloquent as Commissioner Sacks. I'm more to the point. One is, and I want to repeat this, because this gets mangled so many times. The $150 million bond bought property all over the county, not just in the Ag Reserve. When all is said and done, it's roughly 2,400 acres. That was its job, was to buy land in the county for preservation, water, conservation, agriculture, equestrian, there's several different things that it's supposed to be doing. 2,400 acres. And if I'm not mistaken, there's roughly 5,000 acres of farmland in the Ag Reserve, which is roughly 22,000 acres. And anybody can correct me if I'm wrong as we go along. Staff, you know better than I do. There are roughly 600,000 to 700,000 acres in the EAA that are being farmed today. Melissa, you could probably correct me if I'm wrong on that figure. So the farming in the Ag Reserve is a mere pittance of what is farmed in the county, and it seems to get lost. Everybody seems to think that the Ag Reserve is just farming, and it is not. Yes, we do have a statute that says we have policies. That statute also says, you know, we have to have a comprehensive land use plan. I'm having a difficult time here. This is an initiation. Yes, it is. This is an initiation to get some more information. Yes, it is. I don't believe that by us allowing this initiation, we are foregoing any of our rights as we sit here. I do take umbrage to a lot of the things that people have said. All of us that sit here, we are taxpayers. And if someone said, "Well, we're taxpayers." Yes, so are we, who sit up here. We are taxpayers. And we sit here and take a lot of insult from people who have their three minutes on the microphone. We've had our integrity question today, and I take offense to that. By listening to a developer make a proposal here, who is an economic driver in our community, if we didn't have economic development in our community, I'm sorry to say, but us taxpayers would be paying more money in taxes. So I am in favor of the initiation. Staff is here to research. That is part of their job. If it's not this, it'll be something else. So while I appreciate that this may be a little bit more than staff wants to do, we are a county of a million and a half people. We did almost 90,000 permits, excuse me, 82,000 permits, if I'm not mistaken. We're going to be probably close to 90,000 permits this year. It's what we do. We are a business. We are a $6 billion business. So I believe this is something that should be looked at. And I did say earlier on that, you know, I don't like seeing the Ag Reserve being death by a thousand cuts. But I did also say that if there was a project that came to us that was for the greater good of the entire county, and even more regional than just this, then I would be in favor of listening to that. And that's where I stand today. And I know this is still discussion, but I would be in favor of initiating this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Moreno. Commissioner McKinley.
One more thing, sorry. I know we talk about a line in the sand about the 80/20 and the 60/40. This parcel is surrounded by 60/40 developments. And normal drainage requirements, the Health Department has put drainage requirements on, here's an example, Stonebridge. "The developer shall take necessary measures during the development of this property to prevent pollutant runoff to neighboring and nearby surface waters." And Boca Chace, "The developer shall take necessary measures during the development of this property to prevent pollutant runoff to neighboring and neighbor surface waters." So our own golf course is right next to the Preserve. Other developments are right next to it. So the discussion that this is too close to the Locksahatchee Wildlife Refuge doesn't hold water for me. And I'm sure there's more I could say, but I will yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Commissioner McKinley.
Doesn't hold water? Was that a pun? I also would like to point out that the Village of Wellington butts right up to the northern edges of the Wildlife Refuge. Hasn't seemed to be a problem. You know, my great-grandparents moved to Florida in 1940. We're talking about family legacy here. My grandparents moved to Florida in 1975. My parents moved me down here as a little girl in the late '70s. I have lived in Sarasota. I've lived in Tampa. I've lived in Tallahassee, and I've lived here for nearly 20 years. When my great-grandparents moved to Sarasota in 1940, there were no bridges over to the Barrier Islands. And we now know what the Barrier Islands look like all around the peninsula of Florida. They're heavily developed. And my point in all of that is change happens. You know, I was still in my 20s when that bond referendum was proposed. And as much as I like to think I still look, even though I might act like it, that I look like I'm still in my 20s, I don't, because things change. And our job as public servants is to manage that change, you know, based on what's happening in our community. And that's what we're trying to do here today, is to balance that change. I mean, our comp plan, we meet together, is it every other month, and consider changes to our comprehensive plan. Some move forward, some don't. But the idea of a plan is it's a living, breathing document that sometimes warrants change. And some of the comments today, first, let me address the comment on farmland. We seem to be losing sight of the fact that this land in Indian Trail Groves is currently farmland. And although they're talking about giving us 1,600 acres, their very preliminary proposal actually is, you know, they'll keep some of it, the Indian Trail Groves land, and then that 1,600 acres. You're talking 2,682 acres that is farmland right now. And GL Homes will be paying more than half a million dollars in fees to even initiate and file this text amendment. For us, for them to go do the work to explore and propose to us projects that could happen on this particular land. And so, it's up for us to decide whether or not we want to approve that. And if nothing else, if that land comes to us, and we're not able to bring that to fruition into a water project, it's farmland. And we get to decide that we want to keep it in farmland, because we actually would own that land. And so, even at the 1,600 acres that they're talking about deeding to the county, you're talking 670 acres in Hyder West that's under ag production. That is a net increase in farmland preservation of 922 acres. And if we're talking about farmland, if we don't do a water project on this, we're still going to have more farmland if this swap goes through. And when you're looking at John Humley, he's one of the best in the state of Florida and probably one of the best farmers in the country. That's a pretty good person to have farming on your land. It's not, and to that point, it's not swampland. And anybody who came forward today and said that it's swampland, it is not swampland. It's actually under active agricultural production. You're probably buying those products that are grown on that land in the grocery store today. And I would not be bringing this forward for consideration if it didn't have a county-wide impact. Every one of our districts would benefit in some fashion by some of the proposals that are, in a very preliminary manner, being presented to us today. And you don't have all of the details finalized when you initiate. It's the time between initiating and bringing it to us for that first presentation, and whether or not we make a motion to transmit, that's when we see those final details. You know, I said to a friend, "I don't give my allowance to my kids until they've done their chores." GL has to go back, if we initiate today, they have to go back, put up the half a million dollars plus in fees, file, come up with a final plan, and present it to us today. I mean, in the future. So all I'm asking is that we allow the democratic process that we all support so much to be honored today, to move forward, and let's see what comes back. If you end up not voting for it, then you end up not voting for it. But let's see what they put before us and make our decision then. I think this warrants transmittal, I mean, initiation. And I'm tired, guys. We've been here for over eight and a half hours. I just, I think that it warrants further conversation, and there's too many benefits to ignore. And if none of those water benefits ever came to fruition, we'd still have, you know, 1,600 acres in active agricultural production that could be increased to nearly 3,000 acres in active agricultural production. I think that's a pretty good trade. And I would only ask that GL Homes consider, and when they go back and they do their work on this, consider reducing the number of units on the proposal from 1,250 to 1,000 in participating in the exchange program for those 250 workforce housing units. I still want them, but if we can lessen the load a little bit on the development side of this in the Ag Reserve, it's worth looking at. So with that, Mayor, I would like to make a motion to initiate the Indian Trails Grove Agricultural Reserve Exchange text amendments.
I have a motion by Commissioner McKinley. I have a second by Commissioner Moreno. Okay, we're going to continue our conversation. I'm going to cut in the line here. I know Commissioner Kerner is next. You know, I listen to people keep on saying that we're not keeping the promise that was made to the residents when the initial request was made to put their hands in their pockets to pay for the Ag Reserve, or for the lands that were purchased. And I'm reminded that very little of what's been preserved was actually bought. You know, we had seen an exhibit back a few months ago, and we started talking about the Ag Reserve as far as what the future is of it. And we were told that 58% of the Ag Reserve has been preserved. That's 12,839 acres. You heard a number before, 2,400 was purchased. I'm not sure if that number is accurate or not. But clearly, what was purchased was a small fraction of what this county can be proud of in preserving. And there is no one up on this board who has been a stronger proponent of agriculture than Commissioner McKinley. And so, when I listened to her originally bring this forward, and then listened to her arguments for at least taking this to the next step and initiating, to allow additional work on this, and allow GL to come back to us with something that is going to wow us and say, "We need to have this, and this is going to justify this extraordinary step of a land swap." I think that we owe it to ourselves to allow this process to continue. And I'm not going to belabor it. I'm going to be a supporter of the motion, and I think it's going to be a close vote today. And I think that the fact that we are as split as we are lets you know that we're taking this seriously. This is not a slam dunk, and I'm certainly telling you right now that this doesn't mean that I'm going to be, you know, be supporting the next step. But I think this step today, as Ramsey said, until we have the opportunity to dig into this thing, and we're not going to dig into it unless we have this step, and then we can put our resources as a county on it, and GL can put their resources on it, we're not going to have the answer. And I think that there is tremendous merit to what's in front of us today. I understand the concerns. I understand what has been written. I have read the opinions. I'm not mind, I'm not unmindful. But I think that this next step of initiating and getting the facts in front of us is all that we are going to potentially approve today. And again, I will be supporting the motion. Commissioner Kerner, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. And let me start by thanking my colleague, Commissioner McKinley, for initiating this process and bringing this important issue to the board. We should never shy away from public dialogue and discourse about important issues in our community, and this certainly is probably one of the most impactful and important decisions that I will make on my time on the Board of County Commissioners. And let me also thank GL, your utmost professionals. And I mean that sincerely. You know where I've been on a lot of the issues, and I've been against you guys, and you still meet with me and give me the courtesy of knowing what the plan is going to be. And quite frankly, I think you did a heck of a job on this proposal. I think it really is a good proposal in a lot of ways for some countywide benefits. And I'm appreciative of that, because I may not win this vote, but I'm appreciative of the sincere benefit that this proposal would bring regardless of how I vote. So I'm very thankful that we have you in our county, and that so many people that have worked their whole lives get to enjoy your products, and it gives them a lot of happiness and joy. In fact, I'm glad my father's not here right now, but I think my father, my mother's dream is to move into a GL community. But the conversation today is a much larger issue than the Hyder parcel, or, you know, 80-20 versus 60-40, West State Road 7. The conversation today has been centered on, let's initiate this process so that we can learn what the real plan is. And honestly, I feel very well-informed on what the plan is, and what the benefits are, and what some of the risks are. But I also think it's important to look at history as we go through this process, because so much about the ag reserve and land use decisions happened well before, like Commissioner Sacks said, before we were here, before, there must be, you know, 10 or 12 different iterations of the board, maybe more, since the initial adoption of certain policies in 1994, and then the bond referendum in 1999. And none of us are elected with a presumption of historical and institutional knowledge. We just, we contend with a lot of issues. This is a $6 billion government with 6,000 employees and 1.5 million residents. And so I always do my best to go back and look at what the history says about whatever particular issue we're working on. And I went back and read the Planning Commission Public Hearing Comprehensive Plan Amendment Staff Report, Round 18B, which was the initial Indian Trails Grove WCRAGR proposal. Now granted, it's a far different proposal than what's before us today, and quite frankly and candidly, it's a much better proposal that we have today versus then. But when we talk about, let's see what the staff says, and let's do the due diligence, and let's find out, you know, the nuances of what initiation would do for us, we ought to start with what that process was when they initiated or attempted to initiate originally. And bear with me, because there are a couple paragraphs that are a little bit wordy, and I'll try to cut it down. But it starts with, "The agricultural reserve tier has long been recognized as an area of unique farmland, and the concept of the agricultural reserve has long been a fundamental tenet of the county's long-range comprehensive planning. The fundamental concept of the tier has been to allow for limited development while fostering the preservations of agriculture. Beginning with the adoption of the 1980 plan, the county has implemented policies and programs towards this end, such as limiting densities, designating the area as ascending area for the transfer of development rights, to transfer units to the urban area, the 60-40 ag reserve plan development AGR-PUD concept that was adopted in 1994, and the bond referendum and master plan in the late 90s. The agricultural reserve tier is approaching fulfillment of the development pattern that was anticipated in the master plan. This realization of the vision of the ag reserve means that few developable parcels remain. Consistent with that master plan, much of the land area has been developed as 60-40 AGR-PUDs with 60% of each project set aside as preserve area." So what that says to me is that the ag reserve, despite the rhetoric and some of the negative comments about deaths by 1,000 cuts, has largely been very successful. What it also means is that the anticipated amount of units that was to be built, or at least entitled, has come and gone. We've reached that master plan. They're not all built, but that was the precise plan. And so what that means is that it's much more difficult, if not impossible, to continue to develop in the ag reserve unless we waive the conservation easement requirements that were a promise made back in 1994. And that's why GL is here. And they would be negligent as a company if, once we reached that level of homes being entitled and built, for them not to come and try to change the law. That's their business. They build houses. The ag reserve is built out or entitled already, and so they have to find another way to build more houses. And that means having to build on preserved parcels. And I don't begrudge them for that. It's not their decision, it's our decision as lawmakers. The report goes on to say, "However, the proposed amendment would establish," and the amendment that they're referring to is the initial iteration, which is different, but these are global concepts, so there's no prejudice by referring directly to this old report. "The proposed amendment would establish a precedent for the relocation of development rights into the ag reserve that could eventually affect 3,700 acres and other privately-owned AGR-PUD preserves." What that means is that after we sign off on this one and change the law, there's 3,700 other acres of preserved parcels that could be built on if we continue to waive the conservation easement requirement. And that's what this hearing is really about. "This amendment would significantly reduce the acreage available for agriculture preservation in the tier and abandon or significantly compromise the basic concepts of the comp plan. Further, the proposed amendment opens the door to future requests for other sites. The proposed amendment represents a significant departure from the vision anticipated for the ag reserve as stated in the comprehensive plan. Whether to allow dwelling units to be shifted from one geographic area of the county to another is a policy decision for the board, with potentially, with potentially very significant repercussions that have not yet been considered. These include the potential for subsequent amendment requests, not only from WCRO, but from any other location in the county. None of the statements by the applicant have merit to support the text amendment. With regard to the future land use amendment map, with regard to the changes proposed for the WCRO, the prior amendment over one year ago, that amendment was determined to be beneficial in that it would ameliorate a longstanding land use imbalance in the CWC area, to some extent, and provide real and meaningful public benefits to the CWC. By saying that the reduction of units in the WCRO is of benefit for the county, the applicant calls into question the justification and basis of the original WCRO approval, and presents claims that are counter to findings made by the Board of County Commissioners on the prior ITG and Minto-West, Westlake approvals. The proposed amendment allows for development of AGR-PUDs with the required preserves in a different tier of the county, and in doing so allows for the conversion of existing preserve areas in the ag reserve to be replaced and subsequently developed. The three AGR-PUDs enabled through this amendment would also result in preserve areas that are different as to WCR. I don't think that's true anymore in this proposal. But this does not meet the intent of the objective to create reserve areas in the ag reserve. The applicant proposes to revise policy shown in Exhibit 1B to a land, no, that's inaccurate, I apologize. The applicant proposes to revise this policy as shown in Exhibit 1B to allow lands that are currently designated as AGR-PUD preserves, West of State Road 7. This proposed revision would be counter to this adopted policy for the ag reserve tier. "Zoning staff expressed grave concern at simultaneously processing the gross number of development order amendments and associated complexities necessary to unwind the established AGR-PUD preserves and reallocate WCRO lands in their place, particularly given that these are for developments that are under construction or built out." And I'll close with this portion by reading this last paragraph. "The increase of residential development and the reduction of preserve acreage in the ag reserve would alter the fundamental policy concepts to preserve agriculture in the agricultural reserve tier. This amendment would significantly reduce the acreage available for agricultural preservation in the tier, and it would eliminate basic concepts of the comprehensive plan. These include the preservation of agriculture, the prohibition of institutional uses, West of State Road 7, the integrity of the ag reserve tier as a self-contained tier in terms of development rights, except while, when serving as ascending area for transfer of development rights to the urban suburban tier, and the requirements for contiguous preserves in the 80-20 AGR-PUD. The proposed amendment represents a significant departure from the vision anticipated for the agricultural reserve as stated in the comp plan objectives and policies. Whether to allow dwelling units to be essentially shifted from one geographic area of the county to another is a policy decision for the board, with potentially very significant repercussions that have not yet been considered. These include the potential for subsequent amendment requests, not only from the WCRO, but from any other area of the county. Based on the findings presented in this report, the county staff recommends denial of the proposed text and future land use amendments." There's nothing in terms of principles and concepts that has changed from this staff assessment and finding to the one that has been brought before us today. Some of the details have been changed, but the broader concepts remain true. And so to initiate this and to use this idea that we should initiate so we could see what the staff report's going to be, well, maybe they'll have some positive language about the 1,600 acres. But they can't depart, and they cannot retreat from what they put down on paper already. These are findings by our professional advisors and land use planners and people that know what they're doing. It seems like the catalyst for this conversation, from Commissioner McKinley's standpoint, is a water issue. The 1,000 acres of that 1,600 acres already has a conservation easement on it. So it doesn't have, they said that it has density on it, but it doesn't. You can't build homes on it. Now granted, we don't own it, and we could own it under this proposal. But my point is, is that land is probably not worth that much, and the federal government and the South Florida Water Management District and the Board of County Commissioners, when they need something that is vital to the operation and protection of our citizens, and this very, this piece, this parcel very well may be that important to us. This is really the first I've heard of it. But it may turn out to be a critical piece in our water quality and water storage plan for this county. And if that's the case, then the governments can do what they need to do through eminent domain to obtain it. Now, I hate to bring that up, but it's a reality, and don't believe or don't think for a second that the federal government doesn't do that every day. They do. You need a road, you take people's property. You pay fair market value for it, but it can be done. And I think it's not coincidental that the two issues that have prevailed in this conversation are related to water and also affordable housing. The water issue we've discussed. The affordable housing issue is perhaps the most impactful and unconscionable thing about this plan. And let me elaborate very briefly on that. Yes, there's a minute increase, 100 or a couple, I think it's 110 units more for workforce housing under this plan. But we've heard through the testimony from GL directly that homes in the Hyder parcel would be 700,000, a million dollars. You know, the sky, the rocket, the, sorry, the value of homes have skyrocketed. And what we're doing by contemplating this is taking 1,285 more affordable homes out of production. Not every home has to be a workforce housing-controlled product. Westlake is a beautiful example. There are hard-working, middle-class folks that are priced out of homes, but the product being offered in Indian Trail Groves is precisely what this county needs. And precisely in this moment, the starting prices, from their own testimony, are below what the median home price is in this county, which is a half a million dollars. So don't think that taking 1,200 units out of that price range is not going to affect the affordability for 1,200 families that deserve an opportunity to purchase a wonderful product from GL on land that they already have entitled. And those homes are for families. The homes on the Hyder parcel are for 55 and over, and that's an important point. But beyond all that, the most important issue to me is the concept and issue of trust with your elected officials. And if I made any commissioner feel like I was attacking them personally, that wasn't my intent. It's the broader concept of this board having an obligation to honor the promises that were made in 1994 when we started the conservation easement program. The practical realities of waiving conservation easement requirements and allowing them to be transferred outside the agricultural tier are very apparent, and they're very real. But the larger issue for me is that when we sign a conservation easement, it's in perpetuity. And certainly there are times where that policy needs to be reconsidered. Maybe if we absolutely need to put a fire station on a particular parcel or some other very compelling issue. But it shouldn't be used, and it shouldn't be waived, and the promises shouldn't be broken, so that GL can transfer 1,200 homes to a much higher value area of the county. broken so that GL can transfer 1,200 homes to a much higher value area of the county. And then the final two issues are very, very basic. If we're voting to initiate this today—and I believe Commissioner or Mayor Weinroth, when he says, "Maybe I won't vote for it later, depending on the details." But the larger issue is that if we're voting to initiate this, then we're voting to waive those promises that were made, not just in the conservation easement arena, although that, to me, is the most compelling issue. But also in the 80/20 preserve area, west of State Road 7, also in the industrial uses and preserve lands west of State Road 7. You know, a whole lot has been said about, "Well, if you move these parcels to the ag reserve, the government's going to get a half a billion dollars more revenue." That's not our job as a government, is to collect as much money as we can. It's to tax and spend it to protect the safety and welfare of our constituents. And that also means having reasonable and well-intentioned planning and zoning laws. So I'm not compelled by the need to collect another half a billion dollars. It moves me in no meaningful way. Before we go down this road and vote today to initiate—and again, the initiation has been used to be as an exploratory tool—I can tell you what's going to come back to us. And it's going to be the same report with the same concepts and the same waived obligations that we're contemplating today. And if you're okay with doing that, then that's fine. That's your personal decision. It's not an issue of integrity or honesty. In no way did I ever mean to infer that. But let's be clear about what it is, and that is that we're going to change the laws of this county to accommodate, in this instance, a private home builder so that they can have access to more valuable property. So I appreciate the conversation. I appreciate the focus on water. I join Commissioner Sacks in wanting to explore how we can best use this parcel, should it come into our ownership through this process or through government eminent domain, or not at all. But that conversation should not be tied to a land use application for a private developer. I appreciate the time that you've given me to make my statements, and I appreciate everyone's time here today, particularly members of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner McKinley.
Yeah, just some closing comments after hearing everybody else's comments. You know, it's pretty interesting. Minto Homes property in West Lake, the two-bedroom villas are starting at nearly half a million dollars. So I don't know about the argument that this is where all the folks in workforce housing are living. The 2016 plan was basically to swap all of the units on all of the land in Indian Trail Groves and disperse those through all of the preserve properties throughout the ag reserve. And so, that concept, for good reason, didn't have a whole lot of support, and it was pulled. And so, I don't think that the comments in one report six years ago will be exactly the same coming back to us. And then the last comment on broken promises. You know, if we looked at zoning changes and land use changes as broken promises, every single one of us has broken a promise by purchasing the homes that we purchase, unless you were here when the Mi'kmaq and Seminole tribes were roaming the land. Every single parcel of land that we live on and our homes are built on has been the result of a changed land use regulation and a zoning code. So the promise that boards before us made was that if the voters approved a bond referendum, the proceeds of that bond referendum would be used to purchase environmentally sensitive lands to be held in perpetuity by the county. Those lands were purchased, and those lands are still being held by the county and being used for the purposes that were promised to the voters who approved that bond referendum. We have not broken any promises, and certainly, we have not broken any promises by changing living and breathing plans related to land use. I ask for your support in allowing this text amendment to be initiated so we can see the final proposal before we debate on simple concepts. Thank you.
All right. Lights are off. I think it's time for a vote.
So, this has been an interesting day, and I want to thank the public for your involvement and for being here. I have to tell you, you know, my interest in this proposal or this idea stems from my concern over water issues in this county and our region, all of South Florida for that matter. I felt that if this were put in front of me today, I would not support it, exactly of what this proposal is. I don't think—I—but I think it does merit additional conversation. I think the process itself of how we—I appreciate my colleague, Commissioner McKinley, and her concern for water issues in our county and wanting to have this discussion. But I also—and it's through no fault of her or anybody sitting here, but that the process that we have to go through, apparently, from recommendation from staff, is to initiate in order to pull the information together. I contacted the county administrator. She contacted me back on my concern of whether we will have the resources in order to fully evaluate such a proposal from a water professional's perspective and to provide additional resources. And if consultant is required, then there is funding that would be made available to provide that additional support. I think, you know, we're elected to represent everybody. Our districts represent or vote for us, but we represent everybody in our county. And to make decisions that are in the best interest of our community, to weigh the pros and cons, the impacts of what could happen, in order to make this, hopefully, a better place and a sustainable place for us all. And while I don't, as I said, support what is in front of us as a proposal today, I'm interested—I want to know the impact of this and understand the overall impact to our water system and the future for all of us and for future generations that are going to live here. I just—I think that we have an opportunity, and I think honestly, I think we have an obligation to understand—and it very well be that this doesn't pass muster and we look at potentially other vehicles—if this land is so important to us that we would consider other vehicles to obtain this property, if that's what, in fact, is being recommended to us, and that's what's required for sustaining this community. But I'm also willing to allow this to move forward, to understand what those impacts are, to invest the resources. And I appreciate that GL will be investing resources in this. But I also want to make clear that I expect that our staff, using our resources, will provide an unbiased view of what's being proposed, and as it relates to the needs of water storage and the ability to provide clean water to ourselves and future generations of Floridians. But again, I have to say, the process we're taking to get there is not something I would have preferred. We'd address this in a different way. But I'm willing to allow it to move forward. But I can assure you, if this proposal this way comes in front of—comes back to us, I won't vote for it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Bernard, you want to finish it off?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think my kids would probably say, "Dad, you've been speaking too much today." But when I woke up this morning, I was—I've been weighing this whole issue on whether or not I should support this and whether we should do an initiation. And I came here with probably saying that I would have supported initiation. However, after listening to everybody and all the concerns in regards to the infrastructure, the water—which I believe that there is some good marriage to—and however, the final piece for me that—to make me vote against initiation is on the housing piece. In regards to the housing, I remember last week, we had a meeting here, and, you know, GL was here, and they were building in the John West property. We asked them to put 26 units on site, and, you know, they said they wouldn't do it. And in this proposal, you know, the proposal was to have 250 units on site, and today, it's—you know, they're going to put it off-site, exchange, and all that kind of stuff. And then also, in regards to the ITG property, they want to put it off-site, you know, so that reduces the workforce housing again. So for those reasons, I will not support this initiation. I initially thought that maybe I could initiate it, and then we'll see what happens later. But based on what I'm hearing today, I don't see my mind changing in the future. So I will not be supporting initiation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Bernard. And I think we know what the vote's going to be, but Commissioner McKinley, you have—
Yeah, can I just clarify something? I'm simply asking—I'm not asking GL to move away from any workforce housing requirement. I hear the concerns of Cobra and the neighborhoods about how many additional units are being built in the ag reserve. I'm just asking them to explore the option. I'm not saying that has to be their final proposal. Just wanted to be clear about that.
Mr. Mayor, a little housekeeping.
Yes, Commissioner Sacks.
I have close to 200 emails that I would like to file and receive and file.
It'll be received and filed. Would you give it to the clerk so she can go ahead and incorporate it into the record?
They're from—many of you have received these as well. Some have not, but they're from people all over the county. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to call the vote, and let's see where it goes.
Commissioner Bernard?
No.
Commissioner Kerner?
No.
Commissioner Moreno?
Yes.
Commissioner McKinley?
Yes.
Commissioner Sacks?
No.
Vice Mayor Weiss?
Yes.
Mayor Weinroth?
It passes four to three with the caveat, I think everybody has heard, this is certainly not anything more than a step towards more information. And I think that's been made abundantly clear by everybody sitting up here. Thank you, everybody. This has been a very well—a good discussion. I think we have explored this as much as we can with the information in front of us today. All right, we have one more item to address, and then we can all go home to dinner. We're going to deal with County Proposed Amendment Initiations 5A2. Do we have any cards on this?
Yes, we have probably 30 cards.
I guess we're not having dinner. All right. Do we—I don't know if we need a—
A number of people have left, just so you know.
I know.
You might want to go through—
Yeah, okay. All right. Does anybody want a presentation on this? Okay. I'm not seeing anybody looking for a presentation.
No, Mayor?
Yes.
Sorry. You got to look to the left sometimes.
You got to hit that little red button there.
Well, you're too fast, buddy. The—I just have something to say with regard to one of them, that's all. So I don't want to close it completely. I know that we're going to be discussing them, and I don't need a presentation. I just—
All right, Commissioner Sacks, since you've brought up the issue, why don't you start?
All right, thank you. I think with staff, with the 5A2, County Proposed Amendment Initiation, if you look down to the summary, my statement is that if—since we have already initiated the GL proposal, this brings up my concerns on industrial designations in the agricultural reserve tier limited to the new light industrial commerce future land use designation on Districts 5 and 6. And I'm reading this from 5A2, bullet point 4.
Are you looking for staff to give you some input? What exactly would you like, Commissioner Sacks?
No, well, what I would like staff to do is to review this in light of our initiation today with regard to light industrial along that—along the agricultural reserve tier, now that we have made the initiation. I think I discussed this with Ms. Benn previously, so I want to be sure that I'm saying the magic words.
I believe we incorporated the same conditions that are actually within this text amendment into the approved initiation pre-four. Am I incorrect?
This is a county-initiated amendment of five items, and the board can take each item separately. I believe Commissioner Sacks is referring to item number four within that county-initiated, which would include the industrial future land use in the ag reserve. It's not associated with ITG.
I think she's referring to 3C1, where we had approved loss farms, and that was basically a light—in—no, that's not it. Okay, sorry.
No, no. Patricia was correct. Go ahead, if you don't mind, Mayor.
Well, but I'm not understanding the question. So that item is the item that you wanted to point out and discuss?
Correct. I would like to have staff review that in light of the initiation today in terms of that industrial designation in that same 441, that ag reserve tier.
Vice Mayor, would you like to—
Yeah, I think, just to clarify, so this is an initiation, as were others. So this will be coming back to the board, and we'll have—so this is going to give staff direction to go and review that and bring it back to us with all the details and recommendations. So this is just giving them permission—or direction, I should say, not because—
That's exactly correct.
Right.
And we had discussed this before, and thank you, Vice Mayor Weiss.
So I think, yeah, so I think if—it's addressing exactly what you're asking them to do.
Exactly.
By us giving them direction to initiate.
Excellent. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Now, we have a lot of cards and a few people in the audience. So, anybody who put in a card and still wishes to speak on this item, if you will line up, and we'll pull your card. Yes, Patricia?
If I could just make a suggestion, the first two items are department-requested items, that if those departments could—you know, if you could take those two items, if possible, Health and Human Services, as well as Economic Element, unless there are some cards that are here for that. But I believe most of the cards are for the ag reserve items. But I believe most of the cards are for the Ag Reserve items that are industrial multifamily. It's just 5A2, okay.
Yes, Commissioner Kerner?
Well, maybe you want to poll the audience, if anyone's interested in the first two department amendments. But if not, then I'll make a motion to initiate.
All right. Is anybody who wanted to speak, are you looking to speak on the two text amendments for Department of Housing and Department of Services element? I'm seeing nobody raise their hand. I'm going to take that as this is not something of interest to anybody sitting out there. I'm going to take a motion by Commissioner Kerner, and a second by, yes, Commissioner McKinley?
I'll second the motion for discussion. I would just ask staff, when they're looking at the Health and Human Services element, that there are counties across the country that have added drug treatment, substance use disorder type of items into their comprehensive plan, and if we could look at those examples and consider including them. Thank you.
Okay. Call a question. All in favor? All opposed? That passes seven to zero, so we've knocked out two. All right, now, anybody who would like to speak on the last three items that has put a card in, please come to the microphone, and we will pull your card. Dagmar, would you just identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes. You know my name. My name is Dagmar Brass. I first want to say, first of all, GL is not the bad guys. They are forthright, they have integrity, they're transparent, and they're very, very smart. Very, Cobra's very grateful to GL. Every time we call, Kevin Ratter, he actually picks up the phone. And there's no question that we have, that he is not willing to not only answer, but cooperate. My biggest thing, and I'm going to tear up, they actually donated five acres, 10 acres, for a charter school, which was supposed to be built on preserved property. And I am still very grateful. Okay, the thing that I am opposed to is the workforce housing and multifamily housing in the Ag Reserve. We can't keep up with the infrastructure right now, the way it is, 60-40 and 80-20. I know it's, and I am a very big supporter of workforce housing, but it has to be put in the right spot. And the Ag Reserve is not necessarily, I think it's going to open up, well, we talked about Pandora's Box, enough. But there will be very, very many unintended consequences, as far as that is concerned. Cobra did do a study, and we did find that we have many units of workforce housing in the Cobra area and the surrounding areas. So I really don't think that workforce housing or multifamily housing should be a part of the Ag Reserve. You make the rules, you're doing a good job. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Okay, identify yourself, please, and then you have three minutes.
Linda Smith, Jupiter, Florida. And you could probably tell, the reason I'm up here is to speak against the changes to the Ag Reserve, for all the reasons that everybody's talked all day long. So I just want to let you know that I'm going to start spending some of my time trying to reduce single-use plastics in the county. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming up to speak to us. Okay, identify yourself, please.
Christine Hemphill, Lake Worth. On the light industrial and on the Ag Reserve housing issue, I don't want to see an increase in density. The numbers are there, and one thing, since that hasn't, they've been spoken for, but they haven't actually been built. And so I think that we should really do the study in a way that says, we're waiting until that all gets built, before we approve a bigger number yet, because I think that everyone might realize by then that it's adequate. And maybe the housing shortage that's being so much driven by the investment market, which can be, right now, one in five houses being sold or being bought by an investor or an absentee person. And I'm thinking of the affordable attitude toward this whole thing, where a lot of the people who aren't going to buy a house because of their inability, you can't really control what happens to this new housing that you put in, as far as who buys it. The only way to do that is if it's only by qualified people who don't have enough money, who have to be the person and actually be the one that lives there. Then you can address the issue. And otherwise, you're just putting more houses, and more investors are coming. And so Tampa and Miami have suffered that, 17 percent, according to the news yesterday of the new houses in the last year. They said there's a brand-new industry, which is called single-family built-for-rental, and that is developing here in Florida, and that's growing immensely. And that's something that we don't want. And so I think when you look at these text amendments, the, anything to do with the Ag Reserve should not be linked to Indian trails. Everybody wants the water for Indian trails, and the best decision, whatever it is, to be there, and some affordable housing there that's truly affordable to the people, in whatever place or way you do it. But the Ag Reserve is not the same as the EAA, and I also want to apologize if anybody's been offended by the public. We do our best to do what we do, and commissioners have come and gone, and they've all been different. And I think what I would say, I'm not stressed by GL Homes making money either, that was mentioned here. And I'm also not stressed by GL Homes giving a bunch of money for your campaign donations. I don't mind that. And I'm also not stressed by many of the commissioners, not, I would say many, but some of the commissioners that finish their position and go to work for GL Homes, including today. We've got a commissioner recent on their payroll right now. So, yeah, and so if you do what you do, that's okay, everybody knows. But while you're up here, then you're doing what's right. And I think everybody has their heart, mainly in the right place, looking for the right thing to do. And I appreciate all the work you've all done. It's a lot of work, and thank you. But let's don't compromise the Ag Reserve for someone else. Let's go ahead and be fair to everybody, and thank you so very, very much.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioner Moreno would like to ask you a question.
I, this is against all of how I think. I do not like to interact, because that's not how it's done. But when you say that a fellow, a previous county commissioner is working for GL Homes, none of us know that, so could you tell us who that might be?
I think right now Mary Lou Berger's working for GL Homes, and I think in the past, there's been another one.
I'm pretty sure Commissioner Berger's fully retired.
Commissioner Berger's working for them, that is the first we've ever heard of it, and I find that very difficult to accept.
Well, it's good on her.
And thank you. We do appreciate your comments, and we don't take offense. Okay.
Don't take offense.
We don't. We have thick skins up here. Okay.
Hi, good afternoon, Melissa McEwen, 5120 Northeast.
Your baby has been very, very well behaved today. We thank you.
Yes, I'm grateful to be here, and grateful my baby allowed me to be able to be here all day. I am down to my last diaper, so we'll be leaving shortly. But anyway, I just want to say first, thank you. You guys do a great job up there, and interacting with each other, and the community, and listening to us. You know, I've come to a lot of meetings and have worked with a lot of the commissioners and about the property rights of the long-term landowners of the Ag Reserve. A lot of them here have stuck out today. Hopefully, we'll speak to you shortly. And thank you for initiating staff to bring up these text amendments to take another look, as we talked about, the comp plan evolves, and the Ag Reserve has evolved, and to make sensible changes where changes due. So pretty much, my comments have to do with that, and thank you. And to look at the new commerce element that staff is proposing, because there's a light industrial need out there for commerce, for the bug man, for the painter, I don't know, for the pool guy, to be close to all these residences. And, you know, the preserve requirement for that was carried over from, you know, just some other language for the commercial, but it doesn't fit for this type of property. And the ask is that we consider having staff look at the preserve requirement to be above 50 acres. So thank you all, and I hope you could consider that for your decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and have a good evening.
Thank you.
I know, I'm sorry, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, but I'm actually not sorry. I've been here all day long, and I've met many of the meetings and so forth, and...
Identify yourself for the record.
Jim Knight, 740 Havana Drive, Boca Tonne, Florida, still a native of Palm Beach County.
Haven't moved since we started this morning?
No, I have not. I want to just mention that all of these proposed amendments had staff support, and all of them were supported by the Planning Commission. There was a nine-to-four vote, where four of the Planning Commissioners felt that they did not need to have the diversity in the Ag Reserve and have workforce housing. And I tend to differ with those people, or those four people, but I'm glad that we're moving this forward, it's important, and we have to give opportunities. I mean, my kids, they're shackled up together at an apartment, because you can't, you can't go out and just rent an apartment these days, or buy a home. And so hopefully, we find a way to get some actually-for-sale product out there as well in the Ag Reserve. Thank you. That's affordable.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. All right, Joe, come on up.
Boy, my favorite thing to do. Hi, Commissioners, Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you for your time today.
Identify yourself for the record, please.
Excuse me?
Identify yourself for the record.
My name is Joe Malvahill, from Malvahill Nursery at 9821 Happy Hollow Road, Delray Beach, Florida. Thank you for letting me speak today, and I'm a little concerned about the amendment on the new commerce thing that's going to be put on with the living of the size of your property. We're going to be, we're under contract with somebody to do something very well for the people in the Ag Reserve that live here now. Trying to do a commerce park, which will help with all of the thousands of homes that are built, and where that are going to be built. I'm pretty, I was the only active nurseryman in here today, and I've been doing it for 41 years. My family's been farming for 46. And I'm kind of looking for an exit strategy, you know, in the near future. And getting old, you know, this weekend was tough. We got lucky, we missed a freeze by about four degrees, and haven't had one for a while. And here I am in the newspaper back in 1997, with a picture of me when I was 35 years I didn't need those.
You didn't need those readers back then, right?
You know, "On Tuesday, Malvahill Nursery owner Joe Malvahill was scrambling to find a valve for an irrigation pump. On Thursday, he was trying to find a carrier for work in his compensation. On any given day, Malvahill finds himself contending with a host of challenges, meeting French-Canadian label laws, communicating with his employees, and competing with the growers in South Florida." Quote, "The nursery business stinks," says Malvahill, 35, Vice President of a 30-family acre-owned nursery. But ask Malvahill if he'd consider selling his development rights, and he'd say no. Well, I held on to them for a long time. I was trying to get convinced by a lot of these people in the room today, that my property would be worth nothing. They wanted me to sell them to them, because I'm boxed in by preserved land all around me. I have 1,000 acres to the north of me, which was the Bowman property. All my nursery guys behind me sold them, because they needed the money. I struggled and paid my mortgage payment, and it's been a tough ride to do it. And, you know, now I'm getting close to the end of my career, and hopefully, you guys can help me out and help out the community with what great project we plan on having."
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Good evening. Lauren McClellan with J. Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture. I just wanted to start out by commending you and the staff, specifically for the proposed changes to the comp plan for the Ag Reserve. As a planner, I'm happy to see the proposed changes to this 30-year-old plan. You know, it's been said today many times that these are living, breathing documents, and the changes are based on changed circumstances, economic changes, et cetera. I mean, if we weren't supposed to change things, then there'd be a lot more mullets in the audience, and that's not good. No mullets. So that being said, the addition of commerce to the Ag Reserve would greatly benefit the residents and the farmers in the Ag Reserve. Just yesterday, one of our clients, who's a small farmer, was talking to us about the lack of cold storage facilities. He's a small farmer, he has a small produce farm, and he says not every farmer can afford to construct a big packing house, like Alderman or Perro Farms. So he's looking for smaller kind of areas for his, for his cold packing. So right now, he said he's driving really far away, so of course, this adds to the cost. Now, he's got to transport that produce instead of having it within close proximity. He's got to schlep it miles away, and of course, that adds to the cost of the food. That adds to the cost of the food for the county residents. So I think locating these commerce properties, specifically along State Road 7, would be a great thing. I think the only hindrance for the current language that is bulleted out in the initiation is, has to do with the acreage requirement. That acreage requirement was for preserve. That 16-acre limitation was kind of pulled forward from the commercial. Commercial projects larger than 16 acres are required to provide preserve. So that same language is being pulled forward for the commerce. But I think that the commerce development is very different from what's developed in commercial low. Commercial low can be smaller sites. Commerce is typically going to be larger products, larger projects. You need, you know, larger commerce developments need areas for cold storage, last-minute supply chain warehouses that provide products, like for restaurants, for area hospitals, and things like that. So I just think that we need to consider that properties no smaller than 50 acres have preserve. Thank you.
Yes, you're doing double duty, huh? Okay.
Yes, we are. Yes, Jennifer Morton with J. Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture. And good evening, I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I know it's been a long day, and we just really want to just thank staff for putting forth these amendments. Our office does support the amendments that are proposed by staff. You know, the opportunity to provide workforce housing in the Ag Reserve is important, especially when new home prices start at over $1 million. Also, the new commerce category that staff has developed the language for, we think will make an excellent addition to the Ag Reserve. It's a missing element for our landscape services, for uses that serve the needs of the residents that live in the Ag Reserve. Those residents needs, need plumbers, they need electricians, they need those services that are provided in small bay, light industrial uses. Most people, when they first hear the word industrial, think of huge manufacturing facilities. That's not what we're talking about. We're talking about a new land use category that specifically limits the type of industrial to light industrial. So I commend staff for developing that language. The way light, the light industrial, we've developed a couple of conceptual site plans. Light industrial is unique in that it is not like commercial, where it can go up in height. It's all one-story. They also need areas with, around, on the property to be able to circulate trucks and to, to stack, like for landscape services, to have an area designated for their trucks. And so it's a different type of site plan. So I know staff was utilizing the commercial criteria that had been established back about eight years ago, and it's kind of funny how that 16 acres came about. There were three requests for commercial low before the board, and they were all less than 16 acres. So at the time, the board made a decision that anything greater than 16 acres shall have preserve. So when you look at industrial, the 16 acres doesn't make sense, and it doesn't work for the type of light industrial that would, that is needed in the Ag Reserve. And we would request that the board consider a 50-acre or greater requirement for the preservation. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Morton. We appreciate your comments. Mr. Seymour, always great to see you.
It's nice to see you as well. I was going to do a little Torah reading today, but thought I'd skip that, since it's so late in the day. For the record, Brian Seymour Gunster, we represent BBX Industrial, which is an industrial developer who deals in specifically looking at these light industrial commerce-type of opportunities. This, just for memory, this isn't a question of should we do it, right? Because you all had a two-day workshop on the Ag Reserve. We talked a lot about this commerce section, and Ms. Mara was very careful about how she did that. She pulled some language that she had used. And so everybody's sort of on board with this. The problem is, what Jennifer just said, is that 16 acres creates a dynamic problem. So you end up potentially getting to a place... So, you end up potentially getting to a place of saying, yes, we want to do this, and putting a restriction on that makes it impossible to really do it a feasible way. So, you know, it really is about trying to find that balance. 16 acres work for commercial where you could go up, you can do some different things. That's where this 50 acres came from. It was based on some design options, some looking at some things. We're concerned that because of the way this is framed in the staff report, that if you initiate as staff proposed, they're going to come back to you, and there will be a 16-acre preservation requirement because that's what you told them. And so, what we're asking is, don't do that. Certainly at 50 acres where you can start getting into some of those larger things, you have a different flexibility on design. We think that would work. And just to Lauren's point about some of what's here, we've actually had an inquiry, hey, do you know of any space in Western Palm Beach County, in the ag reserve area, for someone who's looking to supply the hospitals? They're trying to find space now. There's very, very little of this kind of space. And it's very nice-looking, it's kept up, it's landscaped, it's not an industrial-looking use, but it's an industrial-type of use, and that's where the light industrial commerce comes from. And so, what we're just asking is that when you initiate tonight, that you do it without that 16-acre preserve, 16-acre property preserve limitation. 50 acres, I think we can make work, but 60 really would kill the deal. So, thank you very much.
Vice Mayor Weiss.
Thank you. My question, I guess, is to staff, is there, is there, would there be an open space requirement or in addition to the preserve amount or?
There is that, the 60% preserve, as some of the speakers noted, is based off of what we are doing now for the commercial. The open space being within the preserve area, these are the types of things that will work out throughout the process. The initiation, really, we should have just left it open and provided options for the board at the time of transmittal. But we'd certainly still would want to provide the board the option of the 60/40 because we had a two-day workshop already on this, and we've already made a lot of discussions and concessions. So, if the board wishes, we can certainly provide two different options or three different options and provide you with the implications of each of those.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
And just to pipe in, I think, you know, from practical point of view, you know, on 16 acres, that means you're knocking out about 10. It doesn't really leave a lot of space there for doing anything. So, on 50 acres, that would give them 20 to work with. I think it's a little more practical. I think I would be inclined to think that that made more sense on these small parcels.
And that's the type of things that we can take a look at when we get to the transmittal period.
Okay, very good. All right. Please.
Good evening now. Brett Gelsamino, 4200 Southwest 131st. And I support all of the county-initiated text amendments that are, that are on the board right now with an emphasis on the affordable housing component. I think that, you know, we are amidst a housing crisis in Florida, Florida at large, frankly. And South Florida seems to be, you know, in the major crosshairs of that due to very real demand drivers that are all of a sudden making us more popular than we ever have been, and it's, it's pricing out a lot of the folks that, you know, make their living here or made their homes here, and they're being driven in other directions to the detriment of, of us without realizing that the workforces and the middle class that, that makes up the base of this wonderful county where I was born and raised are having it look elsewhere because of the strain financially of having housing. And the ag reserve, I'd like to dispel some of the fears that we're not, the proposal with a couple of items on the board aren't here to overhaul or change or ruin the ag reserve. I think it's just special consideration to help complete it. The original ag reserve plan contemplated the inclusion of multifamily housing units, but there are some sort of codified infeasibilities about how to, how to develop multifamily housing without provisions for greater density. So, I think that what's being considered right now is, is really good, and I would, you know, implore you to please consider the, the inclusion of it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I think we all agree up here that if you work here, you should be able to live and play here as well. So, all right.
One more.
One more.
Gabe Boe for the record. Commissioners, thanks for staying late. Just want to express how grateful I am for your decision to allow the balance of multifamily to be returned to the, to the ag reserve to really complete the plan. And we've been working on it very hard over the last couple of months, very excited about our project, and hats off to you. Thanks for all the deliberation and the work, and we certainly support these amendments before and staff has been working with. And it's been this collaborative effort that I think is going to produce a tremendous result, and we're going to bring some workforce housing to the ag reserve. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Boe. Commissioner Kerner.
Thank you, Mayor. There's one remaining card. He had to leave. His name is... Oh, I'm sorry. It's the last one. I thought you were done.
She wanted to be last.
Good evening, Commissioners. Suzanne Malvahill, 9821 Happy Hollow Road in Delray. So, as you know, I have been representing, or, I don't know, representing isn't the proper word, supporting the long-term landowners, being one here in the ag reserve. And one of the words that comes to mind for me in a lot of your deliberations today, and this one as well, is compromise. Working with the landowners, the long-term landowners who had rights, that you've heard the story, that were restricted by the land use change in 19, in the master... I just want to tell you, I flew 17 hours to come here to speak to you for these three minutes. So, that's how important these three minutes are. I'm tired. And...
Relax, you have plenty of time.
This issue affects me personally, us, all the ones that I've spoken about over the last eight years. And then I've helped the Sewells, for example, who are west of 441, who just got passed. The Homrages, who are west of 441 and was passed in 2016. Sunflower, who's west of 441 and was passed. The Woodworths, who just had their, the, the increase in density so that they can build workforce housing. Mr. Linkus was here for almost the entire day, but he had to leave. His property will also be supported by this new text amendment change with the higher density. Mr. Logan was here, he flew in from Tallahassee, and he had to catch a flight to go back out. So, I'm asking you for the same consideration that you've given my daughter, who has, was one of those parcels in 2016 that was under 16 acres. It was the Alderman piece, my daughter's piece, and Homrages' piece. We were all taken into consideration. All these workshops over the last eight years have all been about these long-term landowners. That's really what the essence has been. So, asking for this consideration in being a long-term landowner for this 50-acre mark for anyone else, I can tell you that in the ag reserve is only one other parcel, and that's the Mazzoni parcel, which is not under contract. I asked everyone a year and a half ago who wanted to submit land use change applications, and everyone has come before you who wants to submit one. We're all between 40 and 66 acres. So, I kindly ask you to direct staff to make it, to be consistent with the rest of the people who have come before us to you for this kind compromise in meeting the needs of the community and serving the long-term landowners. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Malvahill. We appreciate your comments and appreciate your time it took to be with us.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sacks.
I want to thank my colleagues. You know, this, this has really been a long day, but to hear from the landowners, and I'm just so blessed to represent this district and to be part of this. I wasn't here years ago when these, these ordinances were put into place, but I will, been out to visit many of you, and I think it's important that I, that as your commissioner, I come out and see your land and see what's involved. But I want to thank my fellow commissioners for, for the workshop, for all the work that we've all done on this. It's so meaningful. We're building a new community, and I look forward to working with all of my colleagues on, as we go forward on this. And thank you, everybody, for being here, and thank you, colleagues, for staying so long. Wish I could offer somebody a little glass of wine, but I don't think it's proper.
We'll take a pizza. All right. Commissioner McKinley.
Thank you, Mayor. I have supported a lot of adjustments to the ag reserve over the years. One of the items, though, that I, I've held steadfast to and found myself on the losing end of it on a five to two vote with Commissioner Burdick, was that reduction in the preserve requirements for sites less than 16 acres. I actually would support initiating the staff recommendation for these proposed amendments, and I cannot support removing or increasing that, that threshold to 50 acres. So, I would make a motion to initiate these county-proposed amendments as presented by staff.
I have a motion by Commissioner McKinley. Do I have a second? I'm not seeing a second. Okay. Commissioner Kerner, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One final card from Tim Logan. My name is Tim Logan. On behalf of Barbara Logan and family, we support this agenda item. We have been a fabric of this county for 40 years. We wish to help the housing crisis with workforce housing. We appreciate your support. And if I may ask, Mr. Mayor, that we take the items individually?
Okay. We can do that. All right. So, the first item's going to be text amendment to add a third industrial future land use designation named CMR, commercial, to accommodate light industrial uses. Do I have a motion to move that forward? I have a motion by Commissioner Marino, second by Commissioner McKinley. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, all opposed, show that is approved, seven to zero. All right, now, we'll move on to the second one. That's the text amendment to establish a policy direction for new industrial designation agricultural reserve tier limited to the new light industrial commerce CMR future land use designation. Do I have a motion from Commissioner Marino? Do I have a second? We're having problems getting that second. Let's discuss it. Is there, Commissioner Kerner, do you?
I think you're picking on me because my light's on from before, but...
Nah, I'm never picking on you.
So, can, can the staff give some sort of perspective on the history? What can you offer us?
Absolutely. We, for that industrial item, that was a direction from the board from the October 26th, and then the follow-up with the November 3rd of last year, when we had discussed the types of amendments that were coming forward, Sunflower and Less Farms being one of them. This is for the industrial portion of the light industrial within the ag reserve tier. The board recommended that we come back with specific criteria, with location criteria, size requirements, preserve requirements, all of that. In the initiation period, we don't provide all of that information. We will be providing all of that to the board at the transmittal period. So, we will be providing you with all of the requirements, regulations, things that was said at the, at the end of the, in the fall 2021, based off of the board's request.
All right. So, we seem a little hung up right now on whether it should be 16 acres or 50 acres. Obviously, you've heard one of our members is not happy going any further than 16 acres. Several of us see 50 as being a better number. So, what will...
If the board wishes, we could come back with both and provide information on both of those items.
I think that might be the preference of the board. Okay.
So moved.
We, we're asking that that, I have, so moved, you're moving the, the item with the instructions to bring back alternate of 16 and 50, and let us hash this through next time.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
That deserves a second.
That deserved a second. I finally, I got a second from Vice Mayor Weiss. Vice Weiss is right here with me. All right, all in favor, all opposed? We okay, Commissioner McKinley? Okay, good. We're seven, zero. All right. Last but not least, text amendment to allow a higher-density residential development in the ag reserve tier to facilitate the provision of workforce housing. Do I have a motion? I have a motion by Commissioner, Vice Mayor Weiss. Commissioner Sacks, you want to speak?
Yes, please.
Put your microphone on.
With regard to that, there is already in the master plan a definition of higher residential development, and, correct me if I'm wrong, staff, but this would be the Atlantic Avenue and on 441, as well as Atlantic Avenue and Lions Road, and then in Boynton Beach Boulevard on the Turnpike, those designations for higher-density residential and mixed use is already in the master plan. So, what do you perceive, and you're talking about Districts Five and Six?
I don't think this is isolated to those particular nodes that you're referring, and I'll let Patricia give us some...
Well, the reason I bring up those two nodes, that's already in the master plan, that there would be higher density at those two, those two locations for District Five.
Right. And that location criteria would be for this particular amendment, this was based off of that Reserve at Atlantic amendment that came up, and they wanted to have high residential aid outside of the Delray Marketplace and the Canyons. Those two both have multifamily available. They have it on their side plan, but this amendment would explore those options for higher-density residential development to provide for workforce housing. That's not something that we have right now. So, it is to be determined, you know, with the next, with the next staff report that you get with the data and analysis, we'll provide you with all of that information, especially the location criteria and all of that.
Okay. That would be good. That would be good. I'd appreciate that so that we know specifically where we can put the workforce. Can we also include, besides workforce, affordable housing? Is that, is that a possibility?
I think that embraces...
No, it's two different definitions, I believe. I'm looking to staff...
Well, affordable is below 60% AMI. Workforce would be above that. If it's up to the board, that would be fine. But as a requirement, I think that would make it difficult. I think based off of the workforce housing, I'm sorry, the ag reserve workshops, it was specifically workforce housing, but, you know, we can't explore that.
I would like to stick with what's in front of us for tonight, and we could go back and have another discussion.
Okay. That's fine.
All right, can we? All right, good.
Very good. We'll get the information. Thank you very much.
I'm going to look for a motion. I have a motion by Commissioner Marino. I have a second by Commissioner Sacks. All in favor, all opposed, seven, zero. It has passed. All right. I'm going to ask anybody if you have any final words, anybody who would like to speak. Now is the time.
Yes.
No, we do have two lights. The director is recognized.
So, unfortunately, we have a little bit of bad news. This is Patricia's last meeting in front of us. She's, after 17 years, is leaving and going on to bigger and better things, so...
What could be bigger or better than this? Come on, 6:30 at night.
She's redistricting. She's tired of EOC, and I think she wants to go into more of the data analysis type field. So, if you know Patricia, all her presentations have always been spot-on and perfect, so she's done a really great job, and she's got the, her department running exceptionally smooth. So, that's, you know, sad that she's going after 17 years, but appreciate all the, all the hard work.
Well...
Don't worry.
We'll miss you.
Do we have to accept the resignation? I'm in.
If I could just say two sentences really quick, just, I want to thank...
It's 6:30, really a chutzpah.
I want to thank Verdina Baker and Patrick Rutter, Ramsey Bulkeley, and Whitney Carroll for their support in all of the work that we've done. And I also want to thank my staff, who have been tremendous throughout these couple of years as I'm planning director, and I'm leaving you in good hands with the interim director here, Kevin Fisher, deputy planning director, who's AICP, Masters in Urban Regional Planning. He is phenomenal and actually even more detail-oriented than I. And so, I want to thank him for, for being here, and thank you, Commissioners, for all your time and effort and support.
We gave you a memorable final meeting. Commissioner Marino.
Thank you. It has been nine hours, if my math is correct. It wasn't, my math wasn't correct earlier, but I think it is now. I do want to say that this...
I do want to say that this was a very good meeting. There was a lot of information that was exchanged. There was a lot of dialogue between our different commissioners. But what I think came out of this meeting is the fact that we all take this job very seriously. We all weigh every decision that we make very seriously. We know how it impacts the people that live here, that the people that play here, that work here. And I just appreciate all the time that staff puts in to help us make our decisions, and I appreciate the rest of the commission with all the patience we show each other. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Marino. And I think Commissioner McKinley, you're going to get the last word of the evening.
So my day started at 7:30 this morning with a chamber breakfast. They hosted a conversation on agriculture, and there was one statement that just stands out to me as we listened to today's debate. Agriculture, you know, farmers are probably the only industry that has to produce at retail and sell at wholesale. And so I appreciate all the thoughtful consideration my colleagues gave to agriculture in Palm Beach County today. Thank you, and well done today, Mayor. This wasn't an easy one.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And on that, I thank my colleagues. We are adjourned.